The August 24, 6:30 PM City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Got to do better than that, hold on. There. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearing must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens are given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 6:30 PM meeting?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second by Member Jordan. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. City Manager.
Yes, sir. No presentations. We are now to Boards and Commissions. Item 6A, the North of our Commission on Park and Recs. The terms of regular members Bianca Almo and Sunny Aguilar expire on August 31, 2021. Member Bianca Almo has expressed her willingness and desire to continue to serve on the Board as a City Council appointee, and has requested a reappointment for a two-year term to expire on August 31, 2023. Regular member Sunny Aguilar does not wish to seek reappointment at this time. Currently, there's one application on file for your consideration, which has been pulled, Mr. Aaron Fason.
So is Aaron Fason here at this time? Oh, he's not here. He's withdrawing.
He's withdrawing, yes.
Okay. So what is our official step for this moment?
Appoint your one Bianca Almo.
And hold on a second.
Yep.
Okay. Is Bianca here? Okay. Not necessary. We're reappointing. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second from Member Jordan. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto 6B. This is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Currently, there are three applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. Jonathan Van Zyl Del Jong, and Ms. Yvette Fiss. They have expressed their willingness to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2023.
Member Robinson. I'm sorry. That's no problem. Anybody have any discussion on any of the candidates or nominees? Member Nelson?
I know one of the candidates is here. I don't know about the other one. I was sort of, I think both of them were very qualified. I was sort of more inclined to say my support went to Ms. Fiss. She is an environmental engineer, and I think that the more disciplines we have on the Titusville Environmental Commission, the stronger that Board is. So that would be my thought.
Any other comments? Those who are applicants for this position, if you would, I'm not sure where you are. So if you're here and you want to speak, come on up, please, if you wish.
I don't have anything to say. I just want to introduce myself.
Come on up and introduce yourself. Thank you very much. I must, because if you don't, you won't be on the microphone, and they won't hear you at home.
I don't have anything much to say except for that. Miami Vet Fiss, I'd like to introduce myself to all of you, and I'm an environmental chemist. And I hope that you choose me. I care very much about the environment.
And your resume is very impressive. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who is on the list?
You have the handout that I gave you a few minutes ago. I'll make sure it's the handout. Also, this is the handout to serve.
I think we have that one.
That's the same one.
I even have one in color.
I'm a candidate. I'm Robert Johnston, the same person, Robert Stanley Johnston. That's me. I'm a registered engineer. And I think this is wonderful that Mrs. Yvette, I guess her name's Yvette, 30-year resident. That's wonderful. I think she's an excellent candidate for this position. I am also available for this position. I want to say that it sounds like she's got really good credentials. And I, but I also noticed that she has on her references that she has Jolynn Nelson. And that's why I bring this sign forward. This sign forward is that Jolynn Nelson is incredibly prejudiced against me. She's humiliated me. She's insulted me. She's done all kinds of things as far as this fraud. On February 12, 2019, she began nodding her head with everything the mayor and the city manager said, which is complete fraud. There's not a bit of truth to it, and she continued it. So she's very prejudiced against me for commission of this fraud, which we can't find the $70,000.
Stop clock.
Can't find the report.
Stop clock. Stan, I want you to talk about you in this time, and we're going to move on from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's going to be very.
Talk about you for this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go.
It's very unfair for me to come up here to have such unfair prejudice. In other words, this is humiliation against me as a candidate for this position. I mean, I have several strikes against me to begin with. It's unfair. It's slander. It's humiliation. It's fraud. This is what the city is involved in, also in containing Mr. Scott Larisse, our City Manager. So we have a very dysfunctional government, and I'm here to object to it. I object to people voting against me, against me, for fraud. And that's what's happening here. We've got at least three members of the council who have been continuing to promote and participate. I say participate in this fraud, including our city attorney. And I'm not, I just don't think it's fair. It's not fair. It's not fair. Well, this fraud is, it's genuine. If you want to see it, you got ORB and Page, you got YouTube, you can watch it, and it's continued, and it's continuing today. It's not fair. It's not fair to me, my family. It's not fair to the public. But I think Yvette would be a fine candidate for this particular position. But on the back of this sheet of paper, the first three items have to do, especially with this, with what's going on in the city, the dysfunction, and it has to do with me also. In other words, what's going on against me that is, what do I want to say? Is maligning me, offending me, and I object to it very much. So I think I should be allowed to speak this, and I'll wear this shirt.
Thank you.
I'm asking for two more minutes.
I see no requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I would like a nomination for someone, and Vice Mayor.
I would move to appoint Ms. Fiss as an alternate member to the Titusville Environmental Commission with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2023.
Vice Mayor has a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second for Member Jordan. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Passes unanimously. Thank you so much for stepping up. Thank you. We move on.
Onto item 6C. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission's semi-annual report as written, and no actions required. The next item is Planning and Zoning Commission accept the resignation of regular member Dwight Severs of the Planning and Zoning Commission with an unexpired term to expire on January 31, 2023. His resignation was effective on August 19, 2021.
Do I have a motion to accept that resignation?
I would move to accept that resignation with regret, and thank you for all your service and all your hard work.
Member, have a motion? Member Robinson?
Yes, I too. I hate to see him go because I like balance, and I think that he added balance to it. I know that a lot of times, there was a lot of bogging down because of things, but I like balance, and I thought he brought that. That's my thought, and on that, I do accept his resignation.
And you would be the second?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second before we do that. Go ahead. Oh, who's that? No, never mind. I thought that was Dwight. Never mind. I'd like to just say, I've said this 100 times, I've known Dwight. Dwight and I missed Severs. I would say in this case, and I have coached Little League baseball, T-ball, minor leagues. He's a good man with a good heart and cares about what happens in Titusville on a daily basis, and is willing to do whatever he sees fit to do what he feels is right, and I appreciate that very much, Mr. Severs. Thank you so very much. Roll call vote.
Mayor, we do have one card.
We have a card? Is that a new card?
Stan Johnson. No, we have that one.
John Lous didn't like, appreciate me saying point of order, but I want you to understand that my name is Stan Johnston, is that I have a card on this issue, and so before voting on this, I'm allowed to speak.
Hold on. Stop clock. Stop clock. All you got to do, if I miss a card or miss something, all you got, you know me, say, wait, you missed that. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll do that. I'll say, wait, I missed that.
It's not a confrontation. It's not. It's simply that I got caught up and really wanted to say something about Mr. Severs and kind of messed the card up, so. Got it.
Okay. You can still do that after I talk.
Yeah. Well, I'm done now. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm appreciative that although it's going to be recognized that I'll be able to talk, but John Lous told me for sure, he's going to talk to me in three minutes. That way my time is up because he doesn't appreciate what I did.
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
Disruption of, pardon?
I said two minutes, 30 seconds, he's going to talk to you.
That's right. Disruption of the meeting. So what's going on is that I approve of this, and here's what Mr. Severs wrote in his letter of resignation, which I think you should appreciate, is that it was, this is not very complimentary what he wrote, but it was, let me read it to you. It says, is that what council is doing, you can read it in his letter, it says he defers, the council defers to the paid professional staff who appear to tell a majority of council what they want to hear. In other words, what he's saying is not what's right or what's true, but what they want to hear. That's what council is doing there. And this is what I see, for example, when I raise up this sign, it says, hey, this is what, you know, this is what city has done, and this is what, this is what they want the council to say. So for example, is that council is that our public was sprayed with sewage, and the cars are sprayed with sewage for four months instead of turning off the fountains. So I'm just giving you an example, is that I can understand, he's not saying it, but why some people are going to quit these positions because the dishonesty in our government, of our city government. It's completely dishonest with Mr. Stoffer, and I gave you, there's three things on that, the first three items on this sheet that I handed out to you, that anybody here that can look at it, has to do with incredible dishonesty, nonsense, absolute nonsense, like spraying people with sewage. That's nonsense. And like I said before, recently, I said, it seems like to me is, do we have a psycho who is our city manager? He's like the Pied Piper of nonsense. This is, and the other item on here has to do with sewage. Sewage stopped going into the river on December the 19th. There's nothing going to be, that's ridiculous. We just saw it. We saw it. We got all kinds of witnesses, all the way to February the 18th, not December the 19th.
Thank you.
Okay. Two more minutes, please? Nope. Thank you.
No, sir. All right. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Severs. Thank you very much. As I said before, we've been through the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I appreciate you. Thank you. And now, we move to petitions and requests. You don't want to say anything?
I do.
Can't say I didn't try.
I was talking to our partner.
Petitions or requests? Let's go.
Which item are we on now?
Petitions and requests. That's this.
Okay. All right. I thought we were going to go, okay. Did you record? I'm sorry. I was talking with the boss there. Stan Johnston here, and on petitions and requests, I thought that 6C was supposed to be a report by Brad Parrish. What happened? We don't have it?
City Manager, we are where we're supposed to be.
Yes, sir.
Petitions or requests?
What happened to the other one? What happened to the?
I'm not sure what you're looking at. I have.
P&amp;Z Report, 6C.
No action needed? No action? If this written report came today?
Okay. So I'm up here on petitions and requests, and again, I think some people ought to pay attention to this fraud. I mean, like I said, I've been humiliated, insulted, and it continues now for over two years, two years, and it's still being promoted. It's just lies and misrepresentations. It's not, it's not a mistake. It's not a misrepresentation. What this fraud is, is an intent to do me harm. And it does. It does. That's Jolynn Nelson there. She was one of the initiators of this, and she wants to do me harm, and she's doing it, and she continues to do that. She hasn't admitted to this fraud. No one, not even our city attorney. I want you to understand, because of this fraud, our city attorney cannot enter into a suit against me. He'll be on the witness stand. He can't do it. Our city cannot have our city attorney sue me. He is tainted with this fraud, tainted with it. There's no question about it. We go to the same church, but he's tainted. In other words, he's saturated with this fraud. He can't sue me. I don't think, I don't see anybody except for Mr. Robinson can sue me on this council because I'll knock this, I'll knock the heck out of you at court. I'll bring up this suit. I'll bring up this fraud. So that's what it is right here. You've given me an immunity by your dishonesty, your deception, your nonsense. That's what you've done, and I'm fed up with it. I object to it. That's what I'm talking about here. Dishonesty, deception, a dysfunctional government. That's what the city of Titusville is. Fire the city manager. That would help a lot. The Pied Piper of nonsense. That's what you got. I mean, look at this. Spraying the public with sewage. Let me put it upside down. That makes more nonsense. What in the world are you doing? Why would any city spray the people with sewage for four months? Can't turn off this.
Thank you very much.
Asking for two more minutes?
No, sir.
I guess I'll go get it. Thank you.
Anybody else for petitions or requests? Name and address for the record, please.
Douglas D'Angelo, 1018 Indian River Avenue. I'd like to propose a motion to appoint Corinne Oderman as the Parks and Recreation Board. I know that we just found out that there was a void in the actual.
What does she do with this now? Because this isn't where you do this, that's for sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're, no, you're fine. I'm just, I'm not sure. I think you, has she already applied?
No, she, we just found out about the position opening, but we both are avid.
Call City Manager's office. Can you go from there?
Clerk's office.
Okay. Call the clerk's office, and they can guide you on the application and go from there.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else? All right. City Manager, Consent Agenda.
Onto Consent. Council, are there any items that you have any questions of staff that you would like addressed?
Just one, let me, it is, it's the, well, we have, we're putting out contracts, and I mentioned this before, that we continue to get applications from one vendor, and the vendor continues to get it, and that's not a problem to me. It is, it's I. It is I on the Osprey. It is, it's not a problem, but it's also, it's just concerning that, and I guess this is something that came from me, and my background is a contractor in the military. I just get leery when a low bidder always get the contract. I understand that you've worked with the person, the low bidder gets the contract, and then all of a sudden, all of these discoveries and change orders began to come in. I just want to be careful with that, just because, you know, when you start getting change orders in, we represent the public, and you get all these change orders there, and once you put a bid on a project, it shouldn't be a whole lot of discoveries along the way. So just be careful with that, and I'm mentioning it before in coming up with change, this is change order number two, and I hope that there is not a change order number three. That's all I have to say.
Member Stokel.
Member Robinson's point, I was going to bring something at the end of the meeting to that, so maybe we can discuss that further, maybe amending what, how the process is. So thank you for bringing that up. My question was on the gateway signage for item J. I didn't know if Kevin and Sandy got enough direction from our presentation meeting, or did you need us to clarify anything when we vote on that one? Good? Okay. That was it.
No other questions or concerns? City Manager.
Council, and any members want to pull any of the items? Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes. We have one individual that has signed up on six items, and another individual has signed up for item J.
So I'll read for the record the titles, and then we'll call the cards before you vote. Consent Agenda item 8A, approve advisability for car rental agency zoning. Consent Agenda item 8B, approve the contract funding for Titusville Police Department collaborative video with IACP. Consent Agenda item 8C, approve the contract award to Robinson-Bush for Human Resources Employee Benefit and Risk Management Services. Consent Agenda item 8D, approve the assignment of investment advisory agreements from PFM Asset Management to U.S. Bancorp Asset Management. Consent Agenda item 8E, approve the contract award for Morning Dove Fiber Optic Improvements. Consent Agenda item 8F, approve the continuing consulting contract award for Stormwater Continuing Consultant to AE Services. Consent Agenda item 8G, approve the contract to the American Rescue Plan Act Independent Review Compliance Audit Contract to Government Services Group of Tallahassee, Florida. Consent Agenda item 8H, approve the agreement with GIS Incorporated to provide professional services for GIS services. Consent Agenda item 8I, approve change order two to the Osprey Nutrient Removal Project with Wharton Smith Incorporated for unforeseen debris impacts related to the biological nutrient removal structure. Consent Agenda item 8J, approve the landscaping and gateway signage work order number two to Kimberly Horn and Associates Incorporated.
Thank you very much. Clerk, could you call the cards, please?
Good evening. Nathan Slusher at 860 Allen Street. I want to talk about the landscape signs, the entryway signs. We went out in July last month and redid the landscaping of the Garden Street sign, and it includes low maintenance, low maintenance drought-resistant plants, so they only need trimming biannually intentionally. Redid the mulch, painted the lights, making it look better. So the work order for $29,000 is a little concerning when it only costs us $117 to fix Now, the paint, approximately $200 to do all three signs currently to repaint them. Mr. Jordan had a phenomenal idea with the LED lighting. You could pull the bulbs that are in there and replace them with LED strip lighting for approximate cost of about $200, you can order those lights. The 50 sign needs new landscaping, which is going to cost between $100 and $200 in materials. The U.S. One sign in South needs about the same, and I do love the idea of two new signs. I saw the map, and I thought that was phenomenal. But the concern I have is. But the concern I have is, is we are about, I hope we're not, but we could approve $29,000 just to design it, not even to do it. It's just for design and permitting when the cost is nowhere near that, just to, to spruce them up. And the letters were amazing. Those colorful letters she had, those were awesome. But I do want to press a big concern on the cost of that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kevin, can you get with him on that or answer her a little bit of that, please?
Um, I, for one, am not interested in the big expensive signs to add on the U.S. One. And I've had some discussion with Kevin on that, but, uh, we'll go from there, but, but good points.
Yeah, the work order incorporates two things. Two, it's, well, three, sorry. Two is the final design and permitting for the I-95 entryway landscaping that you approved at the last meeting. So that's going to be full permitting through DOT and their final plans for construction. That was about $10,000. Uh, so those are final documents to go out to bid, be constructable. So that's both the gateways and 95. That also incorporates a fee for designing two new landscape gateways on U.S. One North and South at the actual entry points that weren't incorporated in the last work order. So that those are two functions. The third one was the signage, was around $8,000 for the sign conceptual designs for the new signs that we talked about, plus helping us overhaul the existing signs as far as coming up with the lighting packages and things of that nature. So the, to me, it's very cheap because both the new signs will incorporate DOT, and once we touch DOT right aways and permitting, those costs start to be a problem. So yeah, there's nothing constructable in the sign in this, but the refacing of the signs will probably be an in-house able to be done. He's correct. Redo an LED lighting? Yeah. We can trade LED packages very easily. Lecturers are going to do that now. We won't be asking them to help us with that. But refacing the sign and coming up with maybe a little better spruced-up look than what we presented i, is what we expect them to do, and then giving us the two new sign options, which would be, a different package won't be the concrete constructed signs, will be more of a post with aluminum sheeting signage that you asked for. So, so it is a little more than just a singular work order, there's multiple phases to that. One will end with construction document on the two landscape gateways that you asked for. You'll get two new concepts, and you'll get this new sign package, including our three existing refacing and the two new, uh, ones that were asked for. And all those do incorporate another fee that the consultants will come back and present all this to you. So hopefully that, that clears up, um...
Yes, it does. I appreciate that. Any questions, council? All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
So what letters will we be looking at today?
Get ready, I'm going to go through this quickly. Get ready. Here it comes. Stan Johnston, uh, registered engineer, and, uh, someone who has been targeted by the city of Titusville with all kinds of nonsense. So, uh, let's go to, um, 8B, that's neither. 8C, approve, and I'll go over that. 8D, neither. 8E, opposed. 8I, opposed. 8J, approval. So, uh, let's go first to the, uh, approval one, and that was, or, or that was 8C, Human Resources Employee Benefits. Uh, this, this is, Human Resources is getting into some, some nasty stuff. Really nasty stuff. I have complaints into, um, uh, Human Resources for all kinds of things. I mean, employees that have, have harassed me, employees that have, have gag orders that can't talk to me, like in Water Resources. Uh, the, uh, door is closed for, uh, uh, no, none of the council members. I, I have any freely, I, I've, I've made some phone calls recently. Nobody's returned my call. Now, I've had Mr. Robinson return a few calls. But, uh, uh, there's some big issues going on. And I have, have made written complaints about Sean Stauffer, and nothing happens, except when I get complaints, it just goes into the wastebasket. Same thing for some other people who are, who have been incredibly dishonest in this organization. So if you're dishonest, it seems like you get a promotion. That's what, that's what I'm finding out. So, so I have some problems with what's going on in Human Resources, and I don't want to blame Joe DiNero. It's, it's Mr., Mr., our, our city manager, the Pied Piper of dishonesty and nonsense who's getting in there, and he's saying, hey, don't do anything. And that's what's happening. So all my complaints against some city employees who have done some dishonest things, they just get put in the wastebasket. Now, what's going to happen very soon, and it may have already happened, is that our city manager is going to fill his pockets with a big...
Uh, stop the clock.
Okay, all right.
Read, read what one you're talking about and talk about it.
Okay.
Are you on B? Are you on C?
I was on C, and I'm going to change.
Hey, listen.
Yes, sir.
You can stay on topic, and we can learn something, but we're not going to talk about everybody. We've already done that.
Okay, all right, 8E.
Go.
8E. 8E and 8I. 8E has to do with Sean Stauffer, the guy I was just talking about, as, as one of, as one example, who is incredibly dishonest, and, uh, uh, he's hurting our, our, our city very much. So, so he's in charge of, of 8E and 8I. 8I is, is unbelievable what 8I is. You can't believe what 8I is. It is what's called a pork barrel. It's like what last was doing, they're having a bridge to nowhere. What it is, is, it's a $10 million, it's actually, it's over 10 million. It's, it's, it's over $11 million. It's a project that the city has accepted that's going to, what we're going to do is we're going to clean up our recycled water and take more nitrogen phosphorus out of it. Do you know what that's going to do? Now, when we use our recycled water to, to irrigate plants and so forth, we're going to have to add fertilizer. Because we take, because that's what our recycled water has in it. It has nitrogen and phosphorus, and the, the intent of this $11 million project is to remove this. And then so what we do is, we'll spend more money on fertilizer now. It's crazy. This is why I call him the Pied Piper of nonsense and dishonesty. This is what he has promoted. So that's what we're talking about on number 8I. And on 8E has to do with Sean Stauffer again. And, uh, he is, he is, is, my handout for this is this right here. This right here. That's what this handout is for. It has to do with, uh, Mr. Stauffer and also our, especially our city manager. It has to do with the, uh, uh, what kind of nonsense they're doing. In other words, what we did, here's what we did, is that we, we approved, and that is council approved, a consent order that is completely nonsense and dishonest and, and not truthful at all. We approved a consent order that says the sewage was stopped going into the river on December the 9th. And probably, there's probably at least half the people here know that it continued, here, right here in this auditorium. And we have plenty of employees that saw it continued. Fact is, I even called up the ci, city attorney after December the 19th. I said, I'd like you to come, and I'll show you the sewage going into the river. Nope, he's not going to do it. In fact, is I contacted all the council members to say, I want to show you the sewage going in the river. And none of that is, here's a picture of it. Here's a picture of the sewage going to the river after December the 19th. But what he did is, the Pied Piper, what he did is, he got you guys, guys to approve something that's completely dishonest, which may go to court. It may go to court. Read the consent order. It may go to court, and you may be going to court. I'll do what I can to get you to court, because it's lies. It's all lies. It's, we have a dysfunctional government, and it's, it's Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Larisse and so forth. And he, he got, he's got to influence you to just tell lies. Sewage spraying, spraying the people with sewage. Now, what good does that do? Uh, what I did, and that's why I'm talking about Mr. Stauffer, how incompetent he is, incompetent, is that he allowed that to happen even though I wrote him and sent him saying, turn it off. I'm not the only one. Many people in our community said, Mr. Stauffer, please turn off the fountains. He didn't do it. So you got another picture here. This picture in the lower right-hand corner, that's, that's a car that's been doused with your sewage. And, and in great, and I put my finger on it, and, and I put a skull and crossbones on it, and then it was photographed by, by the city of Titusville. But right before it was photoed, what, what was, I was run off from Water Resources because they called the police on me. They said they don't want it, they don't want to see my car with the sewage on it.
Stop the clock. Thank you. All right, you got about four more topics you haven't touched yet. You got B, C, D, E, I, J, and you've talked a lot about one area.
Okay.
All right, start the clock.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's very interesting to see is that, is that what, what is going on in our community is, uh... It's horrible. It's horrible. I can't, I can't imagine it. And, uh, uh, this has to do with, item 8E and item 8I have to do with the boss here, Mr. Stauffer. And what you're going to see soon is that it, it has to do with also, it also has to do with this fraud that I've spoken of. Because we're going to have very soon, we're going to have very soon, another agenda item tonight that has to do with Geosyntec, approval of a contract with Geosyntec. So I wonder what Jolene Nelson is going to say then.
Talk about what we've got now.
Pardon?
Stay on, stay on these, and we'll talk about that one later.
Okay, all right. Very good. That's a good point. So, so, uh, I believe that on 8E and 8I is we should not approve these. We shouldn't approve them because there is so much tainted and so much saturated with Sean Stauffer, who has shown complete incompetence and stupidity. I don't know what to say stupidity. It's probably more than stump stupid when you spray people with sewage. It's really stupid. Absolutely stupid. I can't imagine anybody doing it. But that's what, that's what he did. That's what he did. And I called, I called everything, everybody I could to stop him. I called the police. I called the Department of Health. I called the FDEP, and nobody could stop him. No gag could stop him. He's got to keep, he's got to keep spraying the public with sewage. And what is, and our psycho over here, uh, Mr., our, our city manager, allowed him to do that.
Stop, stop the clock. Stop the clock. All right, you ready to get back to what we're here?
Okay, so, so I'm opposing this.
Go.
I'm a, thank you, thank you, Dan. I'm, I'm opposing these issues just, I mean, just because the people who are working on them, intently working on them, are, are those who are, let's say, I want to use the word corrupt, or just complete nonsense. They don't have a lick of sense. I mean, that's just what, I mean, my grandmother would never put up with this stuff. Wish she were here. Now, she'd tell you some, something. I think your grandmother would, too.
Yep.
So, um, uh, ma, let me close it, because you've, you've heard enough of me, and ma, I won't ask for another two minutes this time. Okay? So, so, uh, so 8, 8E and 8I, I, 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 I believe that you should oppose them to look, look, look into what he's doing because he's, um, Mr. Stauffer is spending a lot of money, and I don't see that it's justified. And this, and, and some of these projects are absolutely crazy, like 8I is absolutely crazy nonsense project that is just like building a bridge to nowhere. And actually, it's worse than that because we're going to have to pay now. We're going to have to fertilize things more. So, uh, and that, that also came from our, our, our wonderful city manager. And these are also, also supported on here. They're, they're explained on here if anybody wants to get it from this, uh, uh, I guess they're all gone now. I'll put some more over there, so anybody wants to have a copy of this. So, um, I, I won't have, ask for two more minutes. I'll even stop before it's, it's over. Time's up.
You're about there.
There you go, thank you.
Got eight seconds.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Thank you. All right, um, any other cards on consent agenda? All right, with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, consent agenda items 8A through 8J.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson? Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Motion, um, consent agenda passes unanimously. City manager, the ordinances.
On to, uh, item 9A. This is ordinance, second reading, public hearings and related action. This is on, uh, June 13th, 2017. City council approved an interlocal agreement between Vard County Property Appraiser and Bravard County Tax Collector for services related to stormwater billing, non-abhorrent assessment. Staff is proposing a 0% rate increase for FY '22. This resolution, uh, certifies the stormwater utility assessment role for the municipal fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and authorizes the mayor to sign the certificate to non-abhorrent assessment role for transmittal to the tax collector's office.
Thank you. Is, uh, any staff report or anything on this?
No, I did provide you a resolution off the table.
I see that, thank you.
Statutory references and, and typos, and so if you approve it, I'd ask you to approve the one as modified with the references.
Okay, very good. Uh, council, comments? I see Member Robinson.
Yeah, just a question, it just may be my oversight on the, uh, where it says staff proposes a zero. Is that FYI 2021, 21, 22? Yeah, okay. It just said FYI 22 in this one.
No other council comment at this time? All right, call the cards, please. Uh, no cards, so I have a motion on this ordinance. Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution, uh, number 28 dash 2021.
Does he need to make it more specific on that? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Next is, uh, 9B. This is a resolution for the State Revolving Fund Resolution for Wastewater Facilities Plan. Uh, we have a staff presentation, but I'll go ahead and introduce the item. Approve resolution 29, 2021, related to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection State Revolving Fund, SRF, adopting wastewater facilities plan dated July 2021 for the replacement of various force mains, master pump station improvements, inflow infiltration mitigation improvements, Lime Street lift station improvements, and other improvements to the wastewater system, and providing for an effective date. And I think the presentation is on the way.
Staff report. This is where we go. One moment, please. There we go. Red light, there you go.
I'm Jennifer Lyons with AE COM, and I'm here to present your wastewater facilities plan. This plan was created with the intent of, um, giving the city the option to get loans through the state revolving loan program. I'll talk a little bit about the state revolving loan program, and I'll describe the proposed projects, their costs, and answer any questions. The Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program provides low-interest loans for stormwater and wastewater improvements. The city plans to implement several wastewater improvements to the system over the next five years, and several of the projects are proposed to be funded through these low-interest loans. In order to be eligible for a state revolving loan, um, you have to prepare a wastewater facilities plan and present it to the public, um, which is why I'm here tonight. So the intent of this presentation is to explain the projects, their costs, and allow the public to be involved in the process. This project originally started with what we're calling the Indian River Force Main, which is the consent order project, um, related to the force main break at the end of last year. As we started the facilities plan, the city asked if we could bundle a series of projects that the city could consider moving forward with, um, in an effort to be more proactive with addressing issues, potential issues in the wastewater system. The city has 300 miles of gravity main and force main. Most of the 10 projects in the facilities plan are geared towards improving these pipe networks. Um, there are 225 lift stations in the system. Um, there are two lift station upgrades projects in the plan. The plan does not include any upgrades to the wastewater treatment facilities, but improving the system will improve the operation of the facilities. Um, overall, improvements were selected based on a number of factors, including the age of the infrastructure and the condition. There are seven force main replacement projects identified in the plan, the first of which is the Indian River Force Main Project. This project is in design now. The design is planned to be complete before the end of this year, and construction... The design is planned to be complete before the end of this year, and construction would move forward next year and be complete by the end of next year. There are six other projects which have been identified based on their potential to potentially break, so based on risk factors associated with the force mains, in some cases based on a history of breaks with the force mains, and based on the consequence of what would happen if there was a force main break in these locations. The plan also includes some projects to rebalance flow between the cities' two wastewater treatment facilities. It includes upgrades to lift stations to bring them into compliance with current city standards, and it includes upgrades to reduce inflow and infiltration. Currently, the city's Osprey Plant at times exceeds its capacity during periods of heavy rainfall, so the inflow and infiltration improvement projects will improve the gravity collection system, the gravity mains and the manholes, to reduce this extraneous flow that's entering the system. There are 10 projects in the plan. The city is under no obligation to move forward with all 10 projects, or to use the state revolving loan fund to fund the projects. The intent of including all 10 projects in the plan was to provide flexibility to move projects forward quickly and efficiently, should the city decide to move forward with the projects. The two projects that are moving forward right now, I should say, this is a five-year plan, so it's about two projects per year. The two projects that are moving forward right now, the Indian River Force Main Improvements Project and the Riverside Drive Force Main Improvements Projects. Those projects are each budgeted at around $4 million. The biggest project on the list is the inflow and infiltration projects, budgeted at approximately $10 million, and that's intended to be a multi-year program that would last for the duration of the five years, so about $2 million per year of improvements. The overall cost of the capital projects identified in the plan is around $41 million, including a conservative estimate of loan fees and interest, the overall project cost is around $43 million. But most importantly, the planned rates that the city has now are sufficient to pay the projected debt service associated with this loan, if the city were to move forward with all the projects. And with that, I will answer questions.
Any questions, Counsel?
So, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's, Member Nelson.
Just thinking. So, these projects would start as our loan is paid off for the water plant wreck?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we're just, we're not taking on new debt, we're just continuing the old debt, so to speak.
It's different debt, but if you remember from the Budget Workshop, that one of the things that's very unique about SRF is that you don't actually start paying on the loan until the project is finished.
Correct.
And so, a lot of the projects that you see up there, they're multi-year projects to get designed and constructed. And so, as we're moving forward, and our best guess is right now about when the debt service will actually come on, will be when the existing bond that the city had from 1995 will be tailing off.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? I see nothing from Counsel, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have cards?
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm registered engineer, I'm listening to this, and what we are doing with this $43 million, it is a new debt. And here's what he's saying, he's saying, it's a new debt. And it's, we're going to say it's going to be taken care of by our current rate. So, in other words, it seems like what our current rate would do, if we didn't have this $43 million, new stuff, is that we would be lowering our rates. So, we're not going to lower our rates. Now, these are millions and millions and millions of dollars by this Mr. Stauffer, who I've criticized heavily, and who has been dishonest to me, dishonest to FEMA, dishonest to the city manager, and so forth, the previous city manager. And I complained to the city about this. He's handling $43 million here, he's handling $11 million of this other project that is a pork barrel. I don't think you know what he's doing. The $43 million is way out of, I mean, you need to look at that, that's a lot of money for a city that's about 50,000 people. $43 million, are you kidding? So, I just don't think you should approve it, you should lock us into this. This is a tremendous debt service, tremendous. And to say, oh, well, it's just going to be easily taken care of by just not changing our rates, are you kidding? In other words, we can spend another $43 million over the next, whatever it's 10 years or 20 years, or whatever it is, 15 years maybe? Think about what's going on here. This is a big deal. I mean, he shoved this on you, and I think you should consider it, table it or do something with it. This is a big deal, $43 million? I mean, we're throwing millions of dollars here and there and so forth like that, just like we did on the well field at the last meeting, is that we're spending so much on this well field over here at Indian River City. This is, I think you need to look into it, because this, when you have some engineer or something that says, well, it's going to be $43 million, just like that, and you just approve it. I think you need to get some second and third opinions on this thing. That's a lot of money for us. Take $43 million divided by 50,000, that's a lot of debt for every person. $43 million, that's a lot of debt, a lot of debt. And that's what, that's what he's saying, let's do it. So, in other words, we're going to pay for that. We need to look at it. We need to look at it seriously. That's a big deal. So, if, at least table it. Have somebody else also look at it. Because, two more minutes? Probably not.
Yes, ma'am, no, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cards? Do I have a motion, Member Jordan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 29-2021, State Revolving Fund Resolution for the Wastewater Facilities Plan.
I have a motion, I have, Member Nelson?
Yes, second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and I kind of want to add to that, that is a lot of money, and we know that, we don't take that lightly. Infrastructure is a big deal, and certainly we've had our issues with infrastructure. So, one of the main things that I'm for is infrastructure. Clearly, that's something that's happening in the entire United States, and you don't ever hear about it with it being inexpensive. So, that being said, thank you very much, City Manager.
Onto item 9C, which is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2-2021, property rights element. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, considered this amendment during their meeting on August 18th, 2021, and recommended approval 6-0. Statutory provisions in Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes relating to comprehensive plans were amended to require each local government to adopt a property rights element into their comprehensive plan. Inclusion of the property rights element is intended to protect private property rights and ensure that they are considered in local decision-making. House Bill 59, which became law on June 29th, 2021, adds Section 163.317761, Florida statutes, effective July 1st, 2021, each local government is now required to adopt a property rights element into its comprehensive plan. This new element must be adopted by the earlier date of the adoption of its next proposed plan, or the date of the next scheduled evaluation and appraisal of its comprehensive plan pursuant to Florida statutes. Ms. Bisaka is here to answer any questions you may have about the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Member Robinson?
No, I just, I'll re-ask the question, this is related to all of the changes in law that has been.
It is.
Any other questions or comments from Counsel? City Clerk, the cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, aren't you tired of hearing me yet? Well, if you're tired of hearing me, why don't you do some things that, look into what's going on? What we need here is, we need some honesty, we need to do what's right. And in this comprehensive plan, we already have problems that I've talked to you about. The fact is, on this thing, oh, by the way, here it is, number 13, that one that didn't get. I had it at my table, so I'm sorry, I missed it, I missed an opportunity to speak. And I know you all missed it too. Probably not, though.
Dang it.
Okay, all right, here we go. On this particular item, it has to do with comprehensive planning of the city of Titusville. And the city of Titusville, I'd like to take out your notes right here, right here. Note number, this has to do with the, is number five, it says erroneous flood zones. That's comprehensive planning, and that has to do with rights and so forth like that. And it says over 36 years, I'll just read it to you, it's a very quick one, very quick. 1985 to present, erroneous flood zones, another of city's fraud, deception projects. And that's over 36 years, that's from 1985 to now, of uncorrected 100-year floodplains disputed in 1985 by freshwater management study, yet unfairly and illegally concealed from the public and female by city, including Sean Stauffer especially. He's not here, but he can hear about that. In 2016, a loam are removed from Dan Diesel's grandmother's house, about 88% of homes, including her, from the firm map of Baker Subdivision, thus releasing some of city's victims, some of city's victims, and exposing only part of city's fraud and deception. Wow. Parkland Estates, whoa. Parkland Estates, Bay Meadows subdivision, and some homes along Orc Eagle Boulevard still remain in flood zones, not corrected by city's deliberate and unfail failure, and that's talking especially about planning department, to notify, well, and also our city manager, notify public and FEMA of known disputes, errors of city's firm maps. And we're talking about the comp plan, we're talking about flooding of homes and so forth like that, and not flooding of the homes, and paying insurance premiums that you're not supposed to have. So, we've got proof already that was wrong. And Parkland Estates is in a similar situation, they're scared, they're scared. People in Parkland, who I've represented in Parkland Estates, they're scared because they've seen what happened to me, they've seen the police behind me and so forth like that, and they're scared. They're scared to complain about this. Jolene Nelson has been not helpful at all, although she said she would be. So, I'm talking about comprehensive planning is a problem we have. Resilient Titusville is just a fraudulent document. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I can take a motion. Member Nelson, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve Comp Plan Amendment 2-2021, property rights element.
Second?
Second.
By Member Jordan, roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, second reading.
Onto 9D, the City Attorney will read the ordinance for the second reading of Ordinance Number 21-2121.
This is Community Gardens, Ordinance Number 21-2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to allow community gardens as a permitted use in the public, P zoning district, and a limited use in neighborhood, commercial, NC, general use GU, downtown mixed-use DMU, and regional mixed-use RMU zoning districts, and to expand the limitation standards by amending Chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending Sections 28-54 Use Table and 28-271 Community Gardens, provided for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation of the code, and an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their August 4th, 2021 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval with an amendment to remove the screening requirements. Based upon a request by members of the public, City Council approved advisability for staff to prepare amendments to the code explaining the zoning districts in which community gardens are permitted and limited uses. City Council also expressed interest in visually buffering the community gardens along the arterial roadways. The proposed ordinance expands community gardens as a permitted use in the GU zoning districts as agricultural uses are currently permitted in that district. Community gardens are proposed as a limited use in GU, neighborhood, commercial, and public use, downtown mixed-use and regional mixed-use districts, with the requirement for visually buffering along the arterial roadways. Ms. Bisaka is available to answer questions that you may have on 202021.
Ms. Bisaka, do you have a, I'm not putting you on the spot here, but you have, yes, ma'am, do you have a summary of where we were and where we are? I know that it was a little confusing, and that's why we handed it to you.
There's only, there's a few changes in this ordinance. One is expanding the areas in which community gardens can be located, which was the request by Counsel to look into. And the second is to reflect the Counsel's concern about screening from an arterial roadway, and that's the recommendation that planning and zoning recommended be removal, removed from the ordinance. In addition to that, the current ordinance states that a community garden shall not be greater than two acres in size, and may be further limited by the administrator to address environmental constraints. That has been removed, recommended to be removed. We have had this on the books for a couple of years now, and we have not yet had one community garden that has come in and successfully been able to begin operation. So, we really have no experience, but we think that this is appropriate, as Counsel wants to do with the screening on the arterial.
Thank you. Member Robinson?
I'm excited, and I've been in that dilemma or quagmire over the years of getting a community garden here, and I'm just excited about seeing it. I think it's a great thing, and it will help so many in our community. And thank you for your and your staff's effort to make this happen.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, what's the rationale for removing the screening?
There were some comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission that they thought that the potential to put up fencing, that would not be as attractive as the garden itself.
Does that mean you're thinking, or you're good?
Yeah, I'm thinking. Well, I could see that, you know, because gardens are pretty nice when they're kept up. But I think the rationale we had was to make sure that it didn't look bad from the street, right, from the material.
Streets, right.
And the screening that we were talking about, how tall was it supposed to be?
Well, it would depend on how close it was to the roadway, but there are setbacks, and there's a distance that you have to go to make sure that there's no concern with it blocking, turning, and those kind of things. But in general, depending on the zoning category, in general, it would be six feet, and if it were closer than the setback required, then it would only be four feet. So, in English, if the setback for a building is 20 feet from the roadway, you are not allowed to have a fence above four feet, under most circumstances, within that 20-foot setback. And then, at the building line and behind, typically, it's a six-foot fence. Now, if Counsel would like to specifically limit this to the shorter fences, or in some other way, manage that through this, the limitation could be added.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, you know, I can almost see a picket fence, if you will, you know, make it look really nice, but I just don't know. You know, you're going to have, some people may have a community garden, and it looks really nice, and then you may have a community garden that looks pretty shabby, and then we're all saying, we wish we had a fence around it, so we wouldn't have to look at it, so.
This was only arterial roadways.
Right, right.
This is not, would not be a local street.
Okay. So, but the screening will only be, it's not going to surround the whole place?
It's, currently says a community garden shall be screened so it is not visible from an arterial roadway. So, it would not be required on all sides, depending, there aren't many properties that have arterial roadways on all sides.
And we have specification for what the fencing would look like?
Yes, we would go under what the current fence requirement is.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, Peggy, I got a question here, and I'm not sure of the answer. So, would that allow somebody to put...
So, would that allow somebody to put up, like, sunflowers? Something that blocks the view between the garden and the road?
Screening can be allowed, is if it's opaque. You can use vegetative screening. But that's not a sunflower every six feet. Unless, again, this, you can write what you want into these limitations, and you could say sunflowers every six feet, just be prepared that sunflowers may start out a little smaller than you anticipate.
Yeah.
No, I was just thinking, when my dad would have gardens, he would grow peas or whatever down it, which made a really nice screen, and I wasn't sure if that was allowed.
There are, you can use vegetation for screening, but in some cases, these are going to be raised wooden beds.
Yes.
And so what you'll see is a series of blocks or something, and then the beds will be raised. And I think that's because people would prefer to work at a more comfortable level than down on their knees. I know my knees are like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could do a vegetative screening, and that would be appropriate.
If it's possible, in some cases, there may not be the irrigation system that's available along that roadway. Now, there will be some kind of irrigation required as part of these conditions for the garden itself. But that may be a pump and a hose bib, and that may not necess, that would mean someone has to go out and water those, that irrigation, which may be perfectly fine during the growing season for the garden. I don't know about the non-growing season for the garden.
Understood, thank you.
And this sounds like any ordinance, when we're trying to do something good, in this case, we're really trying to help out with the community gardens, it may not be perfect. It won't be perfect, and we're going to, you know, mess with it as we go and say, wait, didn't see that coming. So, I'm all for anything we can do to enhance and help promote and make it easier for people. That's how this all got started, with community gardens. So while it may not be perfect, and we may learn as we go, I hope we can move forward with this. Any cards?
Yes, sir, we have to Lisa Mosher.
Lisa Mosher, thirty-eight, forty-seven Lagerhead Lane, Men's, Florida. First of all, I want to thank you guys for listening to us and getting this through staff and planning and zoning. We really appreciate it, First United Methodist, we're ready to go. One thing I do want to say about the screening, when we were at the planning and zoning and listening to everybody about it, I had at the time pictures of different communities that have it. And they have some on the main roads and stuff, and part of the thing is you want people to be able to see your community garden. So if you put a fence up, and say it's six feet, nobody knows what's behind there. So, you know, I understand about screening maybe, but if you look on many of our roads along Titusville, we have other issues besides a garden. So, I think we need to look on that instead of a garden that's gonna have vegetables and stuff like that. And we're planting two seasons, you can have two seasons, so it should be a good thing for our community garden that we're gonna be successful at. But I think you need to look at the screening thing, that's why they were asking to remove it, was because, you know, to be able to look and see it, and also, if somebody puts up a orange fence or something, that takes away from the aesthetic of the city. So, you know, if you do say something, and it's vegetation, and it's low, then good on the, on the main roads. But that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Next card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, registered engineer, I'm for this thing. I grew up in West Virginia, and my grandmother had a garden all the time. And my father-in-law had a garden, too. And I want you to know, farmers, farmers and those dirt kickers and so forth, they really what's made our country what it is for a good bit, they really have. And right now is that children have very few opportunities to learn the, the values of growing food and gardening. This is an excellent opportunity to really help our community out, not just in the food, but in the education of our children and grandchildren. So I support this very much, and, let's see what else I got here. That's about it, but, and she said something that we didn't have in West Virginia, who we have in gardens in West Virginia compared to those in Florida. She said something, there's two seasons. We have two gardens in Florida, whereas in West Virginia, we only had one garden a year. So this is something, this is something that most of you don't know. I didn't know that, and it's spectacular what God has given us with this soil. So, and seasons, thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty, twenty-one, Community Gardens.
I have a motion.
Is that with or without the screening?
No, actually, Lisa convinced me, so it's without the fence.
We can go back, if it starts looking ugly, you can go back and put a fence up.
And that's kind of why I stated earlier, it doesn't have to be a perfect ordinance to get where we need to get.
So without the screening, is the second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes, yes.
Or Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager?
Onto item E, which is ordinance twenty, twenty, twenty-one, the tree protection ordinance. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty, Twenty-One. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Dying Development Regulations to provide for standards of protection, including the designation of protected trees, creation of total canopy and preserved canopy requirements, standards for removal of heritage trees, establishment of incentives to preserve trees and reduce mitigation, and amending critical root zone, tree survey, and buffer yard requirements by amending Chapter Thirty Development Standards, specifically amending Sections Thirty dash Thirty-One Intent, Thirty dash Thirty-two Criteria for Removal, Thirty dash Thirty-three Relocation or Replacement of Trees, Thirty dash Thirty-four Mitigation Plan, Thirty dash Thirty-five Exceptions, Thirty dash Thirty-nine Tree Removal Permit Required, Thirty dash Forty Tree Survey Required Before Permit, Thirty dash Three Twenty-Four Landscape, Thirty dash Three Thirty-Four Reduction in Required Landscape Yards, and Thirty dash Three Thirty-Eight Natural Buffer Yards, and creating new Section Thirty dash Thirty-one Point Five Canopy Requirements, providing for grandfather provision, separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Titusville Environmental Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended tree protection ordinances, which are included as part of your agenda item. At the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, motion was made to recommend to City Council that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the planning and zoning version of the tree protection ordinance. And if not, P and Z version is not approved by City Council. P and Z recommended approving the staff version that's being presented to council. The motion was approved five-one with one member, Mr. Rice, voting no. Based upon requests from citizens, the city began a process in two thousand and nineteen to review and consider amendments to the current tree protection requirements of the code. During the past two years, council and staff has received input from members of the public and advisory boards and developed various ordinances. Significant efforts have been made by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Titusville Environmental Commission in working with the public to develop the recommended, recommendations which are attached. The ordinance proposed by staff contains the following significant changes to the code: definitions of protected trees, minimum canopy coverages with exceptions, additional flexibility through administrative waivers to save existing trees, additional requirements relating to existing trees, mitigation requirements and pay in lieu of mitigation are modified, permits required for removal of any tree, tree surveys required are modified, a grandfather clause is included in the ordinance. Should the city council desire to increase tree preservation standards without creating a minimum tree canopy requirement, one option is to establish a percentage of heritage trees which must be maintained on site. The city of Tampa has established that no more than thirty percent of heritage trees may be removed for infrastructure improvements within residential subdivision. Information attached includes a summary and comparison of the cities and counties' current tree protection requirements and the proposed ordinance. The attached ordinance is labeled July, August, twenty-twenty-one, contains some new whereas clauses and corrected for numbering. Ms. Bisaka's got a little bit of information for you.
I don't have any presentation this evening, but I am here to answer any questions.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, yes, I, I just love this, the tree ordinance, it's almost as hard as writing the Constitution of this country. Because everyone, everyone has a different objective and so forth. But what, and going through my list of things that I wanted to make sure that so I could come up with some type of reasonable vote or understanding of this. I like canopy, I think that that's a good thing. The location, when it's dealing with the developers, I want the air on the side of the developers. I think that they are, they should be, have as much clarity on what they can do, but preserving as many trees, especially heritage trees as they possibly can. Bunch them up, I think that the total body of land that they're trying to develop, not only just the footprint of the houses, should be considered when coming up with the canopy. And all of those things, but that's not clear in the writing that is put forth for us. And I think that we need to get as much of the ambiguity out of this, out of this as we possibly can, and make, and again, like I said, that if they have a nice spot down at the end of the lot or the beginning of their project, and they want to meet all of the canopy requirements, that's a good thing. As for doing it for the commercial, I had this dream about someone building a factory and the tree coming right up in the middle of the factory. It doesn't work. So, I think that, I think that if, and commercial then, if we are going to come up with some things that everyone can live with, use the same process, save as much vegetation and trees as we possibly can. But what I like about this, I like supervision, administrative oversight, so to speak, so that when you come up with these difficult things that don't fall in line with everyone's goals and objectives, that you can come up with the best idea to make sure that many, we do our best to come up with the best product, especially in the commercial. They have to, if they want a growing business, we don't know what it's gonna look like ten years from now. And, but in the housing, in developing of housing, I've seen a lot of home development with no trees in it, or few trees, but you can plant trees around and give them a chance to grow. As far as heritage trees, my thoughts on them, I love them, but we should take into consideration their age if we can figure it out and make some decisions based on that. So, I think that my thoughts on this, we need to go back to the drawing board, think it through a little bit more, take the ambiguity out of it, try to make sure it's focused, and make sure that we come to some conclusions on, that if a developer wants to do commercial property, he has the same option that, you know, he can have his canvas covering in a localized area, take into consideration to work around the pond, the waters, and so forth. But if he got a little island out in the middle of the pond with a tree on it, that also counts as, as what, what they want to do. And that's, that's the best at this point, with all that I have, just take the ambiguity out of it. I'll look at it again, but my thoughts is to take it back to the drawing board, let's go again, and try to make everyone happy that we possibly can.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So I spent some time with Peggy last week, which helped. And Peggy's first suggestion was decide what you want, what's really important to you. And I have to tell you, Peggy, I thought you were crazy at the time. But I sat down and thought about it, and you're right. Because if you think A is important, you're gonna write it one way. And if you think B is important, you're gonna write it the other way. So, I sat down and said, okay, what's important to me? I think it's canopy, because we want to see our community stay cool. We're temperatures a hundred and three in Seattle, a place which usually is like eighty-two, eighty-three. I mean, it's crazy. So that's important to me, preserving the large heritage trees are important because they're really sucking up an enormous amount of water and nutrients. And to be honest with you, there's an aesthetic value to them. And Kim's looking at me sort of funny, but I will say, I did read your definition of heritage tree, and I was like, it's a good definition, but I wanted something objective. So by saying a heritage tree is something of a certain size is objective. Nobody has to think about it, nobody has to really worry about it. And to be honest with you, looking at the stats that Peggy gave us about how many trees were removed from different properties, there weren't a lot of heritage trees on those properties. Maybe one, maybe two on each property, so it wasn't a huge amount. The third thing I wanted to see is us decreasing the fresh water going into the lagoon, because that's affecting the health of our lagoon. And our trees are really good at sucking up that fresh water before it gets to the lagoon. So I like that area. And I also wanted staff to have something that was fairly concrete so that they could look at it and they could say, this is what we need to do. And I agree with Member Robinson, there's some areas in the ordinance that aren't clear. After reading it, I think we're on our fourth or fifth reading, it's starting to get a little clearer. I'm assuming by the time I get to ten, I'll be, I'll understand it. I also read Mr. Moyes' letter. I don't know if he realizes we actually read his, read our letters. And he had some really good ideas. So, there were some things that I wanted to see changed in the ordinance, which actually Mr. Moye brought out. I didn't have a problem with the industrial or the commercial, because my understanding from talking to Peggy is our Brevard County requirements are higher than our requirements. So, we can ask her, and she can, I'm sure she could quote it without thinking, but it was like, there was like a canopy for industrial that was five percent higher than what we're asking for. And I have to point out, we're also, they are able to put that canopy in their landscape, which is required. So it's not... So it's not a huge difference. And in commercial, every time, for every 25 parking spaces, when you have your landscape requirement, but for every 25 parking spaces, you have to put in an island with a tree in it. So we have some requirements there. I think we're just clarifying it, that for industrial, yeah, you have to have landscaping, now you have to put trees in. So that seems to be really, it doesn't seem to be much of a change. So it doesn't.
Yeah, I agree.
Put a tree in here. So there are some things that I would like to see changed in here, but I think I would like to see, hear from the people out there and sort of see what their suggestions are also.
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Jordan?
Okay. All right. First of all, I, I like the comparison that you did in your charts, based on what the current code is and what the proposed ordinance is. My suggestion is actually close to what Member Robinson said. Actually, I'd like to push this out about two years, to be honest with you. There is not going to ever be, in my mind, consensus with anyone, because you said it when you were talking to Peggy, what do you want? Because what I want is for us to get along. What I want is for anyone who has some property to be able to develop their property in the best way they can, so they have a return on investment. What I want is for us to have trees, but don't be so inflexible that you won't allow development to happen. What I also want is that we get commercial out of this whole thing, commercial and industrial. Where I am, some of the requirements that I have, I put shrubs around buildings that makes no sense whatsoever, it just makes no sense to me. So what I want is for us to have an ordinance that is simple, easy to understand, and certainly not costing the developer or the owner of property a great deal of money, just because we think politically it's the right thing to do, as relates to putting trees or shrubs up. We just, we are in a very unique situation in Titusville, where we've got a lot of land that we have already reserved. Member Robinson said it right when it came down to development, and I talked with staff about this, we, we have applications that only talk about a certain amount of property as development on their property. So they, for instance, if they've got two acres of property and they're only going to develop one acre of it, when it comes down to mitigation or even canopy, you don't even think about the other acre that's not even being used. That makes no sense to me at all. If you're going to have some property and you're going, you understand what I'm saying? If I've got two acres-
I do, but I'm not sure that's correct.
No, that is correct. If, if I decide that I want to develop one acre of my two acre property, then I have to mitigate the trees on that development portion, not on the total acreage that I have. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The intent of the ordinance is that the developer gets to choose what their development area is, and that will be the area that the canopy would be calculated on. So for instance, if there were a lake on the property, I would believe the developer would exclude that area so that you wouldn't have to put canopy on water, on an area calculated with water. If on the other hand, the developer had a two acre parcel and wanted to develop only one acre and wanted to consider that other acre to be canopy, that would be, you could do that.
Did you just tell me I was wrong or I'm not right?
No, sir, I don't think I did. I thought that was Ms. Nelson who said that. Robert, I said it.
No, I, I think, I think I'm correct, because usually when you're developing property or you have a development, you're looking at what area you want to develop and it's not the total area. But I, I understand that there is a, a question that a developer has to ask himself, whether he wants to use two acres versus only use that one acre. So I'm actually correct, even though you think I'm mistaken. I, I know what I'm saying, so I am correct. But the bottom line is, I, I just don't think we're ready for this ordinance as it is written today. It's just too much, too many questions, and, you know, I, I think P&amp;Z did a good job. TEC, I think, just went way too far, and we had others who, who chimed in on this thing, and what we got was a lot of options, for sure. And for us as council to try to come up with something that's going to be succinct and is going to be agreeable to everyone, it ain't going to happen. And what you're going to get is a lot of people fighting back on an ordinance that I don't believe we're going to even be comfortable with. And so just to make a decision tonight and said, okay, we're just going to go with staff's version and that's going to be it, to me that's, I don't think we're going to, we're going to feel comfortable with that at all. Even though I believe staff did a great job, and you have spent a great deal of time on this, and I, and I feel bad about that, that everybody's spent a lot of time on this. Trees are important, we've all said that. LID is important, we've all said that, but as far as putting it in a concise ordinance that is very easy to understand and doesn't make it very complicated and expensive to developers and owners of land, I just don't think we are there yet. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're good?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to go back to what I talked about with the previous ordinance, community gardens. It's not perfect. It won't be perfect. I've, I've sat here and I listened to only three so far, and it's clear to me, it will never be perfect. We will never all be on the same page, and if we're going to wait to get on the same page, we're never going to move forward. So all I'm saying is, when we started this thing, and you used the term many times, Member Jordan, we were trying to get some low hanging fruit and get a few things taken care of. And, you know, when you look at the, what we have now, no definition of protected trees, no canopy requirement, I, I think we can do better. If, if nothing else, know what we're supposed to do to do better. I remember sitting down there, and the term's been used a lot, but I will tell you, it was in the form of a question when I asked it, do we have any untouchable trees? Do we have that? I didn't know. So that's when we kind of took off and said, what do we have? What don't we have? And where do we go? Now, all that being said, I've said 100 times up here, compromise is a great thing, so you don't get your own way, on, on both sides, I get that. But we're not going to go anywhere if we say that we've got to make these folks all agree with it, and these folks all agree with it. We, you know, and I hate to use another football analogy, but it's, it fits, you got to call a play. We got it, we've got to call a play. And we've put two years or so into this. We've had input, probably too much input, to be honest with you, too many cooks in the kitchen, and sometimes that gets cluttered. But at the same time, we've put, you know, I'm, I'm saying we, staff, and P&amp;Z, and TEC has put two years into this, and now it's like, we're kind of saying, never mind, you know, we'll, we'll start over. I don't see starting over. I do see, maybe there's a thing or two, and keep it simple, maybe we lost the keep it simple part when we went for the low hanging fruit, and then we've got so much paralysis with analysis, we're still analyzing. So with that, I heard plenty here to know, we're never going to get an ordinance we all agree on. We're never going to have a perfect ordinance, and if we want to find a perfect ordinance, well, there's going to be no community gardens, and there's going to be, half these things here aren't going to be perfect until, you know, we move forward with them. And they won't be perfect then either. So I, and let me make it real clear, I am not in favor of, of hindering developers to a point that's unreasonable. I am not for going back to 2008, and I've, I've talked and had private meetings with both sides, and sometimes I have to remind people, trees are very important, but so are jobs, so are restaurants, so, and I can tell you right now, the people I talk to, unless we're in a meeting like this, are wanting to know more about jobs, and I hate to say it, more about Chick-fil-A, than they ask me about anything else. So, and, and well, Pope, I was going to tell you Popeyes is open today. I went by, and they were open at four o'clock, and I told everybody that, I got on Facebook like a fool and said, hey, it's open. I got two texts since I got here, it's not open. So I, I don't know about that. Hopefully it's open tomorrow morning, but I digress. We're all trying to do the right thing. I, I really think from the people I've talked to, we'll call the tree team, they don't want us to go back to 2008 either. And I can tell you from talking to developers, that they have gone out of their way many times to save more trees than was ever required. So they're not out there saying, let's go cut down trees just to cut down trees. So somehow we've both, we've all got to see a little bit of both sides here. We can't stop developing, I won't stop growing. I've always said with a, with a team or anything else, if you're not growing, you're dying. But at the same time, we've got to do a better job, and that's why this started, with paying attention to our trees. I look at the current code, no definition of protected tree. I can't, we can't keep that. We've got an ordinance, it's an imperfect ordinance, and if we talk about doing it later, I think you'll be right, it'll be two or three years down the road. We can do better than that. Member Stokoe.
Well, you just kind of said what I, where I was going with this. I, I think we started this and I think we used the term quick wins, and I don't think it's been quick at all. So I think moving forward, since I, I feel like there's a consensus up here to potentially not approve this tonight, I think what would be helpful for me to hear from the public here tonight, as we move forward, is do you not want us to do a tree ordinance at all? Do you just like the code as is? Do you like the ordinance as it is written and would like us to vote on it? Or do you have, if you do have changes, what changes specifically would you like? So hopefully, we can move forward either on doing absolutely nothing, or moving forward and getting something concrete passed that we can agree on. Again, it won't be perfect, but again, I, I think we've had a lot of workshops, we've had a lot of meetings, and I know a lot of time has been put into this by our boards, by citizens, by staff, and I, I'd like to see this resolved sooner than later.
Member Jordan, are you back or is that all?
Oh, yeah. Just, just one other thought. I remembered when we started this, there was this question of clear cutting, and that's, I believe, what got everybody all riled up, because they saw some development, and it looked like it was clear cutting. And there is a specific definition of clear cutting. And you, you're right, we really just wanted to get some low hanging fruit. We wanted this to be quick, and even Peggy told us that, you know, it could take a, take a little while, for sure. And I, I'm, I'm going to rescind a little bit of what I said about two years. I'm actually trying to be smart by saying, maybe I won't be around in two years, I'll have to worry about it. And I know a, a lot of us think that way, but you, you can't kick it down the, the road, because it, it will come back up, and it's not fair to future councils or whatever. So we really, we need to do something, but I'm just saying that whatever we do, we have an existing ordinance, it probably, we probably just, and I think we said it, let's just tweak it a little bit, you know, make sure the citizens understand exactly how this thing is supposed to work, and then go forward. But to reinvent the wheel, I mean, we've added so many pages to this thing, it's certainly not, when you add pages to anything, especially with the government, it's not simpler. It just gets more complicated and more expensive for the person who have to abide by it. So as I said before, you got to get rid of the commercial and industrial, for sure. I, I just think that's just not the right way to go, for sure. And I think a lot of members of the public really were thinking at the time about housing developments, and because they don't want to see quote unquote clear cutting, all you have is, you know, just flat land and, you know, water runoff and all this good stuff. So there is a compromise, for sure, we just need to define what it is, but I think, as Member Stokoe said, I'm not sure if we're ready tonight to just agree on what's going to be presented, or has been presented to us. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, we're going to call the cards, and what I'm going to do, last time I tried not to cut anybody off, and in the end, I always look bad somewhere. So I think the best thing to do, because you have to, there's two sides, let's face it, there's two sides here, I'd like to say we're all in the middle and we're all in agreement, we're not. There's two sides, so if somebody talks longer on one side than the other, that's going to get me. So we're going to stop on the whistle, so to speak, at three minutes, and then council, we will go back to the, if we want to give another minute, I will say, council, and when I get another minute, and we'll say yes or no, and we'll go forward. Most of the time, if you are longer than three minutes, it's like, I just need three or four more seconds. Most of the time that works, sometimes you say that and 20 seconds later, I'm looking silly up here. So with that, clerk, would you call the cards, please?
Yvette Fliss?
Just for the record, unless somebody fell asleep and went home, we have 18 cards.
My name is Yvette Fliss, I live at 4860 Santa Rosa Avenue, Titusville. And boy, is it hot. Wow, it's so hot. When I moved here, which is 30 years ago or so, I was very proud of the fact that our area, Titusville, was cooler than anywhere else in central Florida, from east coast to west coast, from Orlando all the way down to the Keys, this was the coldest place, by seven to 10 degrees every summer. I could laugh at the people in Orlando, because they were sweating, but we were fine. 92 degrees was a hot day. And the difference that has happened is that we're not going to call it clear cutting, because it's not, it is, what's the word? Bulldozing. They don't clear cut, they bulldoze. They come and take the little gentle hills that we have, and they flatten it out, and they clearly take everything off of the land before they're building. Whatever they do when they come back and build up, doesn't really matter, because, let's not use the euphemism, let's just call it what it is. And we are now the hottest area in all of central Florida. We are hotter than Zephyr Hills, we are hotter than the villages, we are hotter than Melbourne, we are hotter than Viera. The difference is, we're losing our tree cover. So as inadequate as some of you may feel that this ordinance is, it is something from which we can work. If the community gardens ordinance can pass so easily with the acknowledgement that we can fix it later, why can't we fix this? I'd like to also remind everybody that when we didn't care about water, when the rules for, for stormwater, or when the rules for the Clean Water Act of 1974, when that came in, everybody said, oh, you know, this is stupid, it's a waste of money. But we cleaned up the water all over these United States, for the most part. We started requiring developers to spend a lot of money to have areas where, however square, however many square feet of roof they covered, they had to have a proportional amount for water to run off, to percolate into the system, and that was very expensive for them. But we considered the future of our children, ourselves, and our planet, and we as communities and counties and states and the nation decided, oh yes, water is important, let's do it. We can be not as far behind the ball as some other small cities, or small rural urban areas in the country, or we can be ahead of the game and say, yes, we do need to take care of this, and I hope that you guys consider that. So I'm for the ordinance, even if it's not as adequate as all of us would like.
Thank you. Next card, please, thank you very much.
Kevin Riley?
Oh, green lights on, okay, I'm Kevin Riley, I live in Titusville, and I'm a licensed professional engineer. I got exactly three minutes, I think I just squandered two, two, so, two seconds, so I'm going to talk real fast. I'm here tonight in favor of the tree ordinance as written by the Titusville city staff. Got five things here, real quick. Compared to the tree ordinance of Daytona, New Smyrna, and Melbourne, this tree ordinance is milder, simpler, easier to use. The tree ordinance as written by the city staff is excellent. We need this tree ordinance. Think about Palm Bay in the south part of our county. Whenever there's a big rainstorm or hurricane, Palm Bay always floods. It's dreadful. It's because the place got clear cut and doesn't have any trees. Palm Bay also has the worst tree ordinance in this county. Titusville is not like that now, and it shouldn't be like that in the future. We have a lot of palm trees. Palms have evolved in central Florida, and they are resistant to hurricanes. You know what Florida looks like after monster hurricanes hit. The houses have all lost their roofs, and the palm trees have all lost their fronds, but the palm tree trunks remain, and the next year, they grow a new green canopy. In addition, native trees have root systems that enable the soil to absorb more water, preventing flooding. Fourth, the issue, the July issue of National Geographic has trees as its lead story. It says, "Along one Los Angeles street, wealthy areas are shady and cool. The tree canopy decreases and temperature- The tree canopy decreases and temperature rises as you drive south. On a warming planet, this divide between rich and poor leaves many at risk. Beat the heat." That's what National Geographic says. National Geographic concludes this concept applies to most cities, not just L.A. Titusville isn't quite like that. Even modest homes in Titusville are shady and cool, and we have wooded areas scattered throughout the city. We have a treasure in Titusville. Please protect this treasure for the future and enact the tree ordinance as written by the city staff. Finally, some great news. Uh, the, the developers don't live in Titusville. We live in Titusville. They can't vote for you.[649.12][649.12][applause] And we did. So approve the tree ordinance and you're home free. Thanks for your time.
Oh, man, that's perfect. Thank you very much. Next up, please.
Jane Spadell.
You have charged us, Jane Spadell, 602 Indian River Avenue. You've charged us two years ago with developing something. Yes, we took it to the nth degree. Yes, it's complicated. I wish it wasn't this complicated. But I'd like to talk to you now and stress the fact that proctu, that we have supported the staff version, as it's not a perfect vehicle, but certainly not worth two more years. That would give four years. I'm gonna ask you to listen to a few points about the economy. Property owners demand trees. They increase property values, they add to the selling price of tree lots, and they add to the selling of developments. Tree lots demand higher costs, they reflect more affluent neighborhoods, they produce higher tax base. Developers are able to demand higher prices for tree lots. Real estate brokers receive higher commissions. Trees protect homes from high temperature, they lower energy costs, less demand for usage. Trees filter water, they reduce stormwater runoff. Their presence assists and increases a critical aquifer of Titusville. They reduce the cost of buying water from outside of the city. Trees help to maintain the soil, they prevent runoff, which pollutes the cherished Indian River Lagoon. City staff has spent countless man-hours, costing the city money, to write and coordinate the tree ordinance as it stands right now, with the impact from PNC, Tree Council, and several others. The money has been well-spent. If we pass this ordinance, we fail to be economically wise. We fail everyone. We fail developers, homeowners, business owners, and city government. We fail to look at our future water supply, our tax base, and the best asset that we've got in this town, which is the Indian River Lagoon. I know you're smart. Mayor, it's time we called the play. It's time we pass this.[838.72][838.72][applause]
Next card, please.
Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. It's time. We don't have two more years. I've been asked to share this. Manatees are canaries in the coal mine. The northern Indian River is a haven for Florida's beloved manatees. They're the number-one attraction for tourists at the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge. We're fortunate to have manatees that live here year-round and manatees that migrate here for the winter. Recently, FWC's manatee biologist, Dr. Martin DeWitt, revealed that our local population of manatees has been malnourished for years, ongoing since about 2013, because of a steady loss of seagrass near the Port St. John power plant, where up to 2,500 manatees hover in the warm water outfall when it's too cold to survive out in the river, open waters. Manatees that migrate here for winter do okay because they leave in the summer for other parts where they find food and put on enough weight to come back here and survive the winter on little or nothing to eat. It was members of our own resident population of manatees that died last winter. With each passing summer, they've had less to eat since around 2013, as the cumulative effect of years of algae blooms have turned our river into a desert. This time, their bodies finally gave out and they slowly succumbed to starvation. With nothing to eat, their muscles and fat were consumed and they were in pain for months before they finally died. Too much fresh water with nutrients and pesticides fueled the algae blooms that killed our seagrass. Take a walk out on a dock and look around at the river bottom yourself. In every direction, you'll see that an area once carpeted with lush seagrass is now just bare sand. The entire northern lagoon looks like this. It will take years for the seagrass to recover, and that will only happen if we reduce fresh water and nutrients going into the river. And one of the most effective ways to slow fresh water from going into the river is to preserve trees to soak up the rainwater where it falls. LID. Staff's proposed tree protection ordinance will not kill the economy in Titusville, but a dead Indian River lagoon will. Please support the staff's tree ordinance.
Thank you.[1019.28][1019.28][applause] Next card, please.
Laura Lee Thompson.
Hi. Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Mims. Developers have an expectation that when they acquire a piece of property in Titusville, they should be able to make a profit from clearing it and adding infrastructure. As a major employee in Titusville since the early 1960s, my family has operated multiple businesses through the decades. Today, we're in the business of tourism, and we have expectations too. We have an expectation that we should be able to attain product to offer in our restaurant, which has a reputation for serving locally-caught seafood. We haven't been able to get Indian River mullet for months. Oysters and clams from the Indian River haven't been available for decades. There once were shrimp runs in the river that lasted through winter and spring. Not anymore. Shrimp and fish need seagrass. No food sources like shrimp and fish mean no predators like dolphins, pelicans, wading birds, and game fish. Titusville used to be known as the redfish capital of the world. Fishermen packed our hotels and restaurants during a half a dozen annual tournaments. Years now pass between Titusville redfish tournaments. We have an expectation that the river should be healthy enough to support the lucrative fishing tournaments that once were so prolific here. We have an expectation that the river should be healthy enough to support, um, plenty of healthy manatees and dolphins for visitors to ensure, to enjoy. We have an expectation that there should be wading birds and shorebirds for the birdwatchers to see and photographers to take pictures of. We have an expectation that the river should be safe for residents and visitors to recreate in. I have an expectation that I shouldn't have had to drive to Winter Park to the wound care center at Advent Hospital twice a week for five months because I had a small cut on my foot that got infected simply because I stepped into the river to get into my kayak and my foot got wet. I was lucky. I still have my foot. Some people have lost limbs due to infections caused by wading in the river's polluted waters. We've reached this point tonight because council directed staff to address the community's concerns about clearcutting trees. A meeting was held where developers said that they longed for a reduction in mitigation costs and an easier way to calculate the impact of having trees on their properties. The tree people obviously yearn to save as many trees as possible. Neither side got everything they wanted. Staff's version of a tree protection ordinance is a balance between the desires of both squads. The river is in a death spiral now because too much fresh water with nutrients flows into it. One of the most effective ways to slow fresh water from going into the tree, I mean, into the river, is to preserve some trees to soak up rainwater where it falls. Staff's proposed ordinance won't kill development in Titusville, a lifeless river will.
Next.
Thomas Perez.
Next card.
Thomas Perez.
Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. Good evening. The Indian River Lagoon will not be getting better on its own. And in the best of circumstances, based on models from other areas undertaking this work, it will take decades to continue, of continued improvements to make it healthy again. Titusville has allowed developers to destroy much of its original ecosystems. The consistent downward trend illustrated by the latest Marine Resources Council report verifies what many have been saying. The Indian River Lagoon is in a state of collapse. The Indian River Lagoon can no longer sustain its most vulnerable species. Scientists have repeatedly offered their consensus of the risks, and many of our leaders have repeatedly ignored them. For far too long, decision-makers have placed their short-term political interests and greed of developers ahead of the needs of the citizens. The collective well-being of this community must be your priority. The leadership you have been entrusted with must be used to create an environment that benefits those who pay, the bills, our citizens, not developers. The citizens before you are individuals with ordinary lives focused on the routine of daily jobs, raising their children, and serving the community in other ways. Their time is limited, yet they make time to come here. Being at council meetings, I don't believe is their first choice. It is not mine. What brings them here is their love for the Indian River Lagoon. Developers and those who represent them are at this meeting because they wish to maintain the status quo and maximize their profits, even at the cost of our environment. The citizens of our community are paying and will continue to pay for their greed and resulting destruction. This is not a zero-sum game, let's be clear. There is a profit to be made for responsible development, since that is what the customers are demanding. Citizens do know when the system's being gained, and the feelings of anger that they are being betrayed is slowly bringing them to meetings such as this one. Development is not a trade-off for the environment. The citizens of Titusville are asking council members to do the job they were elected to do, to represent the needs of this community. It is time to stop sacrificing the environment to meet the needs of development. The choice before you is unethical. To select the recommended plan that provides the most benefit to citizens and the most protection for our environment, or improve on that plan, it is long overdue. Further delay will only continue the detrimental practices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.[1430.88][1430.88][applause]
Kathleen Perez.
Next card, please. I'm sorry.
Kathleen Perez.
Kate Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. Do you ever wonder how potential businesses, resident families, grant partners, and others view Titusville? Here's a headline from National Public Radio. "As Seagrass Habitats Decline, Florida Manatees Are Dying of Starvation." Over 10% of Florida's total manatee population has died so far this year. Most of the deaths are in Florida's Indian River Lagoon, where a large die-off of seagrass has left manatees without enough to eat. This is from Newsweek. "Florida Manatees Dying of Starvation and Unprecedented Numbers." A total of 841 manatee deaths were recorded by Florida's Fish and Wildlife Commission between January 1st and July 2nd. Most deaths occurred during the colder months, when the manatees migrated to and through the Indian River Lagoon, where the majority of seagrass has died off. It goes on to say, "The IRL has experienced devastating losses of seagrasses, wherein more than 90% of the seagrass biomass has been killed off by severe and repeated harmful algae blooms as a result of decades of nutrient pollution from human waste entering the IRL through groundwater, through leaching septic fields, poorly-treated wastewater from municipal treatment facilities, and stormwater runoff containing fertilizers and other pollutants." Here's from USA Today, then the byline's "Titusville, Florida." It shows a video and it says, "Ribs jutting out from its side, a manatee appears to be starving in a video shot at Manatee Hammock Campground. The thin, the thin sea cow looked to be searching the rocks for algae or any plant life next to a sandy-bottom barren of seagrass. But up to 90% of the seagrass coverage died off here in some spots of the Indian River Lagoon more than a decade ago." And the list of news outlets reporting on the manatees starving here, here, goes on and on. Fox 13 News, New York Times, Smithsonian, Outdoor Life, The Washington Post, The Independent U.K., CBS News, The Orlando Sentinel, CNN, weather.com, ABC News, The Wall Street Journal, BBC, MSN, but there are many, many more reporting this. I Googled, Googled, "starving manatees in Florida" this morning, and I got 9,170,000 hits. I Googled "starving manatees Indian River." The result, 8,480,000 hits. Then I Googled "starving manatees canary in the coal mine." Result, 10,300,000 hits. So we talk, talk, talk about the gateway to nature and space. Titusville's a tree town. Our own April Talking Points, Titusville Talking Point says, "Yes, you love the Indian River Lagoon like a local and want to do everything in your power to preserve clear waters, alive with lush seagrass beds and thriving fish, birds, manatees, and dolphins. Will you ensure your lifestyle continues to enhance the vibrancy, aesthetic appeal, and economic value, ammamistan, of the lagoon?" Who are we fooling with this? No one. I'm living, I live in Titusville and I'm asking you to vote for the staff's version. Thank you.
Thank you.[1636.32][1636.32][applause] Next card, please.
Pierre Gravelat.
Good evening. My name is Pierre Gravelat. I reside at 705 Hollins Drive in Titusville. Well, I, nothing to add to the excellent science and sound science that was presented to you tonight, but what I could add, having spent too many years of my life studying law and writing contracts, is that I would agree with you that this particular ordinance would not be perfect. No law is perfect. However, the role of law is to prevent men from indulging in his most, um, business instinct. And this ordinance, it is gonna do that. In 30 years, I don't want to have to explain to my grandkids that it used to be manatees in the river. And the reason is because I want them to experience them in person. This law, as all law, is to bar us from indulging in the wrong side of our instinct as human beings. And it's not perfect, but it's a step forward in protecting an environment that around the world we see is devastating our communities. So, once our treasures, in presented here, go, expanding, growing, creating jobs, will be the last of our worries, we'll have to react constantly to a nature that turns against us. And that's why I am in favor of the staff's version of the tree ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.[1757.12][1757.12][applause] Next card, please.
Saghdara Yarach.
I'm Dari Yarach. I live at 705 Hollins Drive. This was brought home to me very personally two months ago when I walked through Sandpoint Park and, um, there was a manatee dead, bobbing against the seawall. And some tourists were trying to find out And some tourists were trying to find out why this had happened. And I didn't realize at the time that these creatures that I grew up with are starving to death. So, yes, I want you to vote for the staff's version of the tree ordinance, because we need something to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Nathan Slusher.
Before I speak real quick, I want to take a second to recognize the amount of work that's been put into this, no matter the vote, no matter the conclusion, the amount of work put in by Titusville staff and all the volunteers in the last two years, their time attempting to build this compromise should not go unrecognized at all. So I just want to take a second and thank everybody on all sides who have put a lot of time into this. In my opinion, what's happened at Garden Street 995 is not good. Not only was all the land cleared, but some of the few actual hills in Titusville were leveled to develop a new neighborhood. As I've sat and listened to this opportunity through multiple meetings and multiple personal one-on-one discussions, I've learned a few things. One, the core problem I'm hearing recurred over and over is the term "clearcutting" being used as a verb. Defined by these discussions as "the behavior of removing everything living or otherwise within a specified area in order to create flat ground to build upon." Now, Titusville staff has brought forth and informed us that that is not the perfect definition legally of clearcutting, and it doesn't appear, if I remember right, to have a clear legal definition. This creates legal issues when building the legislation. The proposed ordinances I've seen revolve around percentages of land untouched and/or tree sizes. That leads me to believe two things. One, since legal terminology cannot be easily defined, then the only intention of the legislation is to try to control this specific behavior. And that the proposed legislation doesn't address the specific behavior, and therefore we're just going to be right back here in 24 to 48 months to discuss this all over again when people go out and see the next development clearing out also. The developments don't stop the behavior if all we're doing is reducing the size of the land. Nothing changes other than how much they can do to their behavior. If we cannot easily define that which we are proposing, then the proposal cannot solve the issue. Complex and often confusing legislation will not lead to solutions when our problems are not crystal clear in legal terminology. And second, even though I find the behavior wrong, I also find that using legislation to dictate behavior as wrong also. I believe the answer to the problem actually lies within the public hearings that occur in these council walls. Many subdivisions have put forth their plans in here, yet how many of us have come in here and looked at their plans, compared them to a map, and requested them to change specific areas to save the trees? If we, as the people who have the power, are not willing to do the work and make a simple request, then how can we request the council to make demands? Passing legislation just as a simple compromise only postpones this conversation to the next council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Kim Ruzenka.
Why are you chuckling, Mr. Jordan?
You're going to get us in trouble. Thank you. All right.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Kim Ruzenka with the Law Office of Lisa Lines Ruzenka in the Rockledge office. As I've mentioned before, I believe this is unnecessary legislation. The packet I've provided to you shows that. The first document is out of your staff report, and it does indeed show in that second chart that many developers have preserved trees. Subdivision A, 57% preserved, B, 61% preserved, C, 61% preserved, and D, 54% preserved. And this was under your current ordinance, generally using a tree survey prepared by a tree landscape architect. The second page is the current vacant residential land use, which is only 2,000 acres about in the city. There's not a lot of vacant residential land left, and when you compare that with the 13% conservation in parks you have, it's pretty substantial that there's not a lot less. I've circled a few of these. AG Ventures on the top, that's a plat that's already platted, 71 acres, 22 acres, the Nelson property, Mr. Nelson is one of my clients, the Silvestri property of 304 acres, both of those have substantial wetlands issued, they're going to be very difficult to develop anyway. You have Antigua Bay, says 346 acres by the property appraiser, the property, by the development agreement, but actually a property appraiser says it's 447 acres. And you have KB Homes at the bottom there, and I'm not sure what their status is. I have also Mr. Nelson's property on page three to show you the tree coverage, and the wetlands are substantial. Below that is Silvestri. And then the KB Homes property, which is also going to be somewhat difficult to develop under your ordinance, no relation to KB Homes at all, I just recognize there's a lot of trees on that property, and it's going to be hard to develop. When you look at your package map, the conservation land use, as I said, this is page 492, 14% of the city has preserved trees already. Vacant commercial land, there's not much left. 2.3% of the city, 641 acres, and vacant industrial land is only 1,000 acres. This ordinance still contains restrictions on industrial and commercial, which needs to be taken out. These costs, costs will be increased to developer and the home purchaser, with really no indication to you what that will be. There are definitions in your current ordinance of what a major tree is, that's 20 DBH, that is sufficient. If you have to have heritage trees, specify the heritage tree. Not all trees are created equal, yet this ordinance treats them that way. There are still, the grandfathering provision still creates sketch, sketch plat, needs to be added into Section 13C, and, and needs to delete, D needs to be changed, delete everything after the comma, otherwise sketch plat approvals are useless.
How close are you?
If I could have one more minute?
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Allies in favor? Opposed? One minute?
Thank you. Again, these, this ordinance, as proposed, the 12 pages, will increase development costs to developers and to buyers. There's no count of heritage trees on these lands. We don't know what the impact's going to be. There's still, again, no reason why this was. Decades of pollution are not going to be changed by this ordinance. The canopy, why is that needed? Shouldn't the buyer determine what canopy they want, what shade they want? That's a decision between buyers and sellers. The criteria for removal, again, this is Section 30-32, again, there's a bunch of ambiguities I raised last time, and you need to keep one-to-one ratio, not, not one to two, not 2.5 to one ratio, is punitive. You all wanted to incentivize, this is punitive and overregulation. Please deny this ordinance excessive regulation, ambiguous, and vague and unintended consequences without knowing what they are.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next card, please.
Tim, it looks like McWilliams.
Good evening. Tim McWilliams, 4350 Pine Wood Road, Melbourne. I'm one of the hated developers, but I do love manatees and I do love trees. I can tell you firsthand experience, I've developed a project, several, been involved in several projects in the city, did one on Sisson Road. We saved somewhere around 30% of that property natural. We would probably be considered evil because we clear-cut and cleared certain sections where the houses are going to be, because we had to put two or three feet of fill in there in order to set the stormwater system up so that the water doesn't go into the Indian River Lagoon. So if you put these onerous regulations in there, you prevent that from happening, you don't encourage that from happening. I can tell you this ordinance is going to be very expensive, and it's not going to hurt developers, because developers will just pass by the city. It's going to hurt landowners and people that are, that live in the city, that's who it's going to hurt. We'll just make economic analysis and say, "Well, that's too, too, too expensive to develop." Relative to City of Melbourne, I would love for your ordinance to be the same as City of Melbourne. It is much easier than this city. The city is considered the, probably the most difficult in the county as it, as it exists today. It's very expensive to work with. You have a lot of nice trees up here, and we really don't mind, because we create a really beautiful development up here because of that. So, whenever possible, as a developer, we look at a property that has big trees as it adds value to the community, and we try to save those trees wherever possible, because we know in the long run it's going to increase the value of the homes. If you make it so difficult, you'll either walk away, or you'll no longer make that calculation because it's so expensive, and you've got to save somewhere. So you end up hurting yourself. There's no common sense in this ordinance, as it's written, the one that's, that's on the books. I would tweak it some, but I can understand where you're coming from and why it is what it is. But I would just ask you to consider the economic, the jobs that are lost, and that all developers are not evil people, that we try to make homes for people to live in. I personally sat on the Habitat Conservation Plan for the Bivard County, and then I was also selected for the Habitat Conservation Plan for the Scrub Jays for the, for the federal government, and selected by the Fish and Wildlife Service. So there are some good guys out there. We do try to do what we can to make it a positive impact on the city. It's a balancing act as we're moving through with the environmental issues, trying to create a home. Yes, we do try to make some money in this deal. We do try to, you know, all of those things are on the table. So I would hope you consider that when you look at this ordinance and redo it, to put some common sense back into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, member Nelson.
No, sorry about that.
Sure.
No, we don't hate developers. My dad was a developer, so I thought he was a pretty good guy.
Yes.
Most of the time. Except when I was on restriction, but that's, you know.
But I digress.
What can I say? We're really trying to come up with a balance, obviously.
Yes.
So you're saying the Melbourne ordinance to you is easier to work with?
Oh, so I've developed in the City of Melbourne and in Titusville, and Titusville is much more expensive and more difficult and onerous to work through, absolutely.
Okay. And why do you think it is a better ordinance? I hate to put you on the spot, but tell me something about...
Well, I was, one, I'm not here to compare the two, because I haven't, but I can tell you from experience, I've done in the both. I do know that yours requires the buffer area, and you have to count the trees in that buffer area, or Melbourne's does not.
How does Melbourne do it? Because somebody has suggested to me that instead of...
I'm not pushing for Melbourne's, because Melbourne's, I mean, that's, I mean, I would push for it, but it's an easier ordinance to work with. I'd have to look at it, it's been about six years since I've done something in Melbourne, so I'd have to pull it out and remember, but my recollection is definitely it was easier.
Somebody has suggested to me that instead of counting the canopy of each tree, they were counting the canopy areas, which to me makes more sense. So you do an aerial, and, you know, you've got a group of trees here, and this is the area, so that's what it counts.
That's normally how it was. The county shift, they used to, used to do it that way, and they shifted, and it made it much more difficult. And I did one in the county, I saved a bunch of big trees, all of which I told them would die. All of them died.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, it makes no sense. I would have much rather taken that money, taken those trees out, and put new trees in. And, you know, I've done, you know, did projects 30 years ago that have trees as big as this podium now.
Yeah.
You know, and they're up at the right elevation, they're in the right location, they're not in the stormwater, they're not in the sewer and the water. They look beautiful in communities. And so I've always been pushed for heavily putting trees in after you come in, because I, you know, we need to replace them. I'm not all for that. But when you, when you have this ordinance where it doesn't give you that flexibility, that's where everything starts falling apart.
Okay. Because I think we want that flexibility.
Yes.
You good?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. Thank you. Next card.
Rodney Honeycutt.
Good evening.
Hey.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. I just have a few things to say. Particularly opposed to anything in the ordinance that would address or add anything additional to commercial or industrial property. I think we're limited, and really that's the tax base of the city. I'm also opposed to individual lot owners having to get a permit. Currently, it's after a year, after you move in, you can remove trees without a permit, but I think that's infringing on individuals' rights too much, so I'm opposed to that. I would favor something in the ordinance that helps maintain trees that are planted, particularly in big-box parking lots. I know we've got some, some big-box parking lots around that have been around 20 and 30 years, and the trees, if they're still there, and the islands, which are at the end of every parking lot and every 150 feet along, they're either the same size they were, or they're gone. And so, you know, it would be nice if those trees were, you know, 15, 24 inches like they would have been if they'd have been maintained. And, and the bottom line is, you know, recently, in permitting projects, it's just getting so difficult and so time-consuming that I'm opposed to an ordinance change now that would make things more difficult. If somebody shows me how it's not more difficult and not more costly to developers, then, you know, okay, but otherwise, I'm opposed to it. So, any questions?
I guess so.
Yeah, sorry. I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you were saying that in the big-box stores, the trees need to be protected or maintained, or do we need a bigger island to allow them to grow up?
Maintained. I will leave that up to the landscape if they need a larger island or not. But if you look in the big-box stores we have, I think it would be impressive if there were large tree canopies there, and there's not.
That's an idea. Yeah, because the, like, I hate to pick on Home Depot, but it seems like the trees, well, Walmart, too. The 20-foot trees are still 20-foot trees 10 years later. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card.
Bruce Moy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you. My name is Bruce Moy. I'm the chairman of the Government Affairs for the Space Coast Home Builders Association. I believe you probably have a letter that we've sent. We've been watching this very closely, and based on the testimony that we've heard at the workshop and the first reading, the association has changed its opinion. And I've given you a letter that basically says that, as a group, we oppose any change to the current ordinance. And that's based on all the testimony that we've heard over the last two meetings. So our board got together and decided, you know, we want to support, well, some of our like-minded friends have spoken here in front of you, and want to promote that, which is a little different than what we talked about when I sent you a letter back in July. So I guess as P&amp;Z has, has recommended to you, if you're not going to do that, consider this. So I would like to offer that if you don't, if you don't choose to just drop this ordinance and start over, or whatever you plan to do, our original proposal was to keep the staff's ordinance. So we're kind of getting there, but we did have some conditions. We thought there was a couple of things that needed to be changed. In that letter, I believe there were seven separate items that we thought if it changed, I think we could live with it. We prefer that, that you guys do have, and trust me, I do work in every municipality in Bivard County, and Titusville, the current ordinance is one of the hardest ordinances to deal with. Melbourne is the easiest, for whatever reason. They don't have a lot, they don't have mitigation, they don't have a lot of preservation requirements. It's pretty simple. Put a tree every 30 feet, you're done. You know, it's very simple. So you don't want to go there. Understand what your, what your situation is here. I've listened to all this testimony. I've lived in Bivard County my whole life, so I've seen what's happened. I've been here, you know, all 35 years I've been here. If you believe that, I've got a bridge to sell you. But, you know, it's kind of funny that we've come so far with regulation and... But, you know, it's kind of funny that we've come so far with regulation and requirements on stormwater, to right now, you can't discharge any more phosphorus and nitrogen than exists on the property in its existing state naturally. That never happened a few years ago, and we've got all this concern about what's happening to the Indian River. But we're passing legislation and making rules to fight that. It's not what's happening in the future, it's the sins of the past. I mean, being here for 58 years, I've seen that river go downhill, and it's mostly because all that development that happened 50, 40, 30 years ago, that continues to still dump their water directly into the river. So why penalize the people that are actually trying to do something about it and try to fix the real problem? Thank you.
Hold up, stay right there. So just to clarify, you and your group are saying what about this ordinance? The staff ordinance?
Keep it just the way it is.
Keep what just the way it is?
Keep the tree ordinance just the way it is. Don't adopt any new ordinance.
All right, so that is a change?
That's the group's change.
Because you were there last meeting saying that you would be okay with the staff ordinance.
Correct.
So somewhere in the last two weeks, that's changed?
Actually, since the first, since the workshop. Since the workshop and the first reading, we went back to the board, and they, based on hearing all the testimony that was heard at that meeting, the board and the association has changed their position.
Okay. Got it, thanks.
Thank you.
So, can I?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Moy, come back, come back, please.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, going over the changes that you were suggesting from the July letter.
Yes.
Okay, and I understand one is under the tree designation that we add hardwood to the heritage tree.
Yes, ma'am.
Which to me made a lot of sense. I don't know a whole lot of 46-inch palm trees. I just don't. And I don't think that was our intent either. And the second one was under 30-31G1. No impervious surfaces shall be permitted within the drip line unless improved engineered permeable methods are incorporated that would not impede water to adequately penetrate to the root zone.
Yes.
Which again makes total sense. The planted canopy shall be counted as size at maturity, not at planting, so that we don't have two oak trees, for instance, four feet apart, which 10 years from now, they're just going to kill each other.
Correct.
So again, that made sense. I read into you it indicated trees, including heritage trees, which are dead, diseased, or weakened, blah, 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 should be removed. I read all trees, if it's damaged, it's damaged.
Yes.
It goes.
Yeah, and I think that there, and maybe Peggy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that it was, if that language wasn't there, that it would still have to go to the TEC. And I think that that would be just an additional burden to go through when it's already been declared.
I didn't have any problem with adding that. By the way, it doesn't go to TEC, it goes to Development Review Committee, which would be Brad, who also is on the Development Review Committee. It includes the building official, the community development engineer, the planning director, and those are the ones, and those are the ones I can remember. But there's about five staff members, and then it also includes as invited experts, anyone that would be such as an arborist if that was discussion of trees. So it's the, it's not just one staff member, it's, I think it's about five. And I think your last suggestion, number five, was modified so that no longer exists. And I think six was a little confusing. Do you remember six?
Yeah, six was basically just, I think it was striking some language that the mitigation credits shouldn't be counted if it's already for required.
Okay, say that again.
Yeah, because, so if you say, if you preserve a wetland to meet the city's Wetland Protection Code.
Right.
You can't count the trees as preservation. I don't think that's, should be fair, especially if you have a large, you know, if it's 50% of your site or something like that. It seems like it's...
I think we calculated, like, on Jim Swan's property, South Carpenter Estates, because that's all wetland around there.
Yes.
And they would meet the tree ordinance as written here.
Correct.
They would satisfy that. And then number seven was if you preserved a certain amount of canopy trees, canopy area, then there's no other mitigation for significant trees.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that made sense. And heritage trees, if you're 5% above the canopy, other than heritage trees, there's no mitigation.
Correct.
Okay, those are your suggestions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next card, please.
Dwight Savers.
I tell you, name an address for the record, but I'm sure that's not anything I need to do.
Yes, sir. For the record, my name is Dwight Savers, 1308 Riverside Drive, Titusville. Been a resident of Titusville North Bovard for more than 50 years. I certainly would prefer, with all due respect, that you favorably consider the planning zoning draft ordinance because I think it's appropriate under the circumstances. Oh, after listening, I believe that if you're not interested in doing that, to go ahead and support the staff's ordinance. You have heard a lot a few minutes ago about how, under the current ordinance, that 50% or more trees are being saved under the current ordinance. Please do not be misled by that because those trees they're talking about are in the wetlands. It's not because of the existing 10%, it's because they're in wetlands and they're counting them. I have shown you in the documents you have in front of you a clear illustration of what the current ordinance as interpreted and applied does as far as saving trees and vegetation on property. This is a Berkshire property. And with regard to the first page, that was a 45-inch oak, largest oak on the property that was eliminated, and I believe under the staff's ordinance, section 30-32, it has a better chance of survival. The second page, there is a very unique tree, which is a quad oak, and you will see on the third page, its current condition as of Sunday, as far as the fill around it, under the current ordinance, I believe under the ordinance as prepared by staff, that oak tree will have a better chance of survival. The next page reflects what the condition of the property is. And you're telling me we're better off under the existing ordinance with regard to this? I don't think so. Let me just pause there for a moment and remind, as far as justification for vegetation in Titusville, we are unique. We have a surficial aquifer in the City of Titusville, which means we get a lot of our water supply, 50% according to Barnes-Furlan's report in 2019, from the Area 2 well field. And one of the major factors for water supply is you have to have the vegetation there, not completely removed, so when the rain falls, it goes in the ground rather than evaporating. Barnes-Furlan's report said 50% will evaporate. So removing all the vegetation, removing all the trees, you can see what happens.
How much do you need?
Just one more minute, no more than that.
Second. I have motioned a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? One minute?
Thank you. In addition, please protect the vegetation in your area of critical concern as it relates to the Indian River also. Because I don't know what the current numbers are. I remember that the cost of getting your water from Area 2 and Area 3 well field were significantly less than you were paying for water in Area 4. I don't know what the current numbers are. But Mr. Barnes clearly indicated because of past land development practices, you're losing water. And you think what I've shown you in these pictures really is not going to lose water? Yes, it will hold the water, but frankly, it's going to evaporate before it ever gets to the retention pond way down the hill. I would respectfully urge be good stewards and let us not give in to any greed or political pressure in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Mary Sparr.
Mary Sparr. I live in Cocoa, and I'm speaking for Sierra Club. It's been a long journey with this ordinance, and I'm sure that your patience is wearing thin. Everybody would like to see this come to a conclusion and call the play. And I actually am pretty optimistic that we're just about there. I really do think so. Staff has created a balanced ordinance. They really try to be flexible to make sure that development could occur and we could accomplish at the same time saving of canopy areas. So we have this balance in the ordinance, but it's just not quite right. So we've prepared a list, but it's a simple list, and there are very specific things that you could put in there almost instantly because I've really kind of got it down to exactly the words you need. And the first one is, it says, "Since most of the canopy language is stated in terms of canopy area, change the remaining canopy references to canopy area to match." I mean, that's just clarification. "And define canopy areas with allowances for some open spaces." That'll help the developers, it'll help staff, it'll help the entire community because it'll make the ordinance work. Then make sure that canopy measurement is reasonable with planted trees counted as at 25 or 50% of the expected mature canopy area stated in Appendix A. We are willing to be more flexible than before and compromise at 50. 50%, the happy medium. Then avoid clash with state statutes by specifically stating, "Required canopy areas shall not include portions of individual residential lots." That's common sense legally. Then, this is complicated, I don't want to get lost in the weeds, but to make it specific, in the mitigation section, use DBH inch lost instead of mitigation DBH inch for the vegetation and payment options. This avoids some weird math calculations. Take it from me. Five, add an additional incentive. We want incentives. We want this to work, and we want to help the developer reduce the mitigation costs. So may I have one more minute?
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? One minute?
Okay. Add an additional incentive to reduce or eliminate mitigation for those who have satisfied the canopy area requirements. Credit the total DBH inches from preserved specimen and heritage trees and canopy areas against the total DBH inches of specimen trees removed. Let's give the developers another break. Why not? It helps us all. And then finally, add an aspirational sentence to show the intent of the canopy area location selection. Placement of canopy areas within the interior of the development is encouraged. And I'd like to point out that would, that particular sentence contains guidance on the goals to be achieved. As Councilmember Robinson pointed out last week, would be, last meeting would be a great thing. Also, your definition for canopy areas can also provide guidance on the goals to be achieved.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, sorry. This is about tree protection, and you would think that, by golly, I would have nothing to say about this because generally I'd come here and talk about things like dishonesty and fraud and negligence and so forth. So why would I talk about tree protection? I'll tell you why I'm talking about tree protection. Because we have government corruption and dishonesty that is killing our trees. Some people might be surprised, but we do. We do. And let me give you some examples. Is that when I gave you proof that the City of Titusville was dishonest? We got proof with that Lomar Letter of Map Revision of 2016, in which we, the floodplain was lowered for Baker Subdivision over a foot. That was proof of our government corruption because we knew in 1985 that it was wrong. So 2016, that's a long way. And we also know that there's other areas in the City of Titusville, the flood zones are wrong. Now what's that got to do with trees? Let me give you an example. Does anybody remember over there at Publix, Publix on State Road 50, what they did? They did what's called compensatory storage. So what they did is they took a few acres of land there that's located south of Spring Valley, and they raped it. They stripped it. What do you call it, clear cutting? Why'd they do it? Because of the flood zone. We've got a dam. We've got a dam downstream of there, of Publix, right there near April Estates. And we've got, we've got, we've got no calculations for that flood zone, yet that some of these areas in there, they have flood zones in which their numbered flood zone says there's calculations, but they're not. Just like Parkland Estates, that's another example. Just like Baker Subdivision was. There's no calculation, somebody just stuck some numbers on there. So anyhow, what happens is that in the case of Publix, is in order to do compensatory storage, they went ahead and they clear cut a big area, and that looks like about, I'd say it looks like about five acres. And they did it in people's backyard. So that's an example of misuse. Now, what I have, if you want to see it in writing, it's number five and number seven on that sheet. Number five and number seven. Number seven has to do with the city's policy to ignore laws and force, and that's what we're doing. The City of Titusville ignoring laws like FEMA, city stormwater master plan, and so forth.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for the short time.
Thank you.
Take care.
Rita Pritchett.
This time I'm following Stan instead of Robin.
Oh, so he brought it back here.
Rita Pritchett, a member of the great city of Titusville. And so... Rita Pritchett, a member of the great city of Titusville and so glad to get to live in this city.
Imperial States Elementary School.
Yes, yes. Used to beat me up in third grade. I, just before I started, just want to say that I've gotten an opportunity to work with the staff, gosh, 12 years now, and it's a great staff. It's an honorable staff and I highly respect all of you. So I just wanted to say that for public record right now before I got started. And it's, it's good to get to work with you guys. I think you're a great council. You really care about the community and I'm glad that I have you and I really did vote for each one of you. So glad to have you. I wanted to talk to you guys about the tree ordinance and a couple of ideas. And you know what? I've worked with the county for a while and I get all the things that we have to do. By the way, the commission approved our sewer project at the south end of the city today. And so it looks like Mr. Justin's going to get to build his project, hopefully after we get done with the tree ordinance. But I wanted to talk to you about, I'm an accountant, so my strong thing is with budgets and considering those things. And I do have concerns when we start bringing in more regulations. Let me tell you why. Because we have to work in the competitive market with the county. Now, please understand, I care a lot about the trees in the lagoon. I get to be part of designating where we're spending $50 million a year into our lagoon projects. Out of the ARPA funds I just got, I just designated $10 million to some sewer projects up here to help with those items as well. So this is something we all care about. And I have never met a builder yet that wants to build on wetlands or tear down trees. And they're not, they're not bad people. They're good, kind people. I've gotten to know a lot of them and they're really good and a lot of them do live here, by the way. So I just wanted to say that, first of all. And I understand the passion with this. I, I get it because when you really care about something, you're very adamant of protecting it. But I want to remind us to stay hungry in this because you guys, we've had to live through the time period where we couldn't get a business to come here if we offered them our firstborn. And so we need to be aware of that because we're competing with Melbourne, Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Vieira and, and the rest of the county. So, and I'm always selling this real hard and I get it, we've got to do this. But I think we need to maybe slow down on this, if you wouldn't mind. And I'm going to recommend that you do an economic study on what would happen if we make changes to this and what changes we make. Because if it costs us greatly as far as the economy, and let me tell you, I don't think it's a good time to make big decisions during this COVID time right now because I think we're going to have substantial changes over the next couple of years. And as far as making great big changes to ordinances and these things, I think it might want to take a little bit of a pause. So I kind of like the idea that y'all are talking about, just spend a little bit more time on this.
Need a minute? Two?
I could talk real fast. I have estrogen. Okay. But I wanted to recommend that because I, I just really think we have something ahead of us over the next couple of years. And I, and I just would hate to make a lot of changes right now to where we're losing the opportunity to compete with the things that we have. I do want to bring up the thought of as far as how much conservation land we have right now. Guys, we have more parks in North Brevard than any other park in the county. Illes Conservation Land, there's so much of it. There's not a lot of property left to be able to bring in businesses and housing. And I brought up Justin earlier because if you pass this, I don't know if he's going to be able to build his project. And that was a lot of new housing that was kind of affordable down at that end of the county. So I'm just going to ask you guys, I got a recommendation too. One, that you consider doing an economic study that if you make changes, what it would mean to the economy as far as Brevard. And another recommendation is maybe if you have a builder roundtable, sit down with these guys and tell them what it is that's irritating you and work something out and see if we can't work out something that way to stop what is going on that we need to fix. Because I do agree, clear cutting the land just looks terrible, but maybe there's a solution we can come to with them at the table. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. And certainly as the county commissioner, our county commissioner, I appreciate you being here and having an input. I really do. Thank you. Next card.
Robin Fisher.
Well, dang, we get the former county commissioner too.
I like it when you start doing football analogies. You and I speak on the same language. That's all I got too. You know, I mean, you all know I'm in the insurance business. Robin Fisher, 1625 Garden Street. And I was thinking, God forbid if we ever had a hurricane and we had some total losses of homes. Because I was imagining that if the county or just the city would say, hey, you got to build your home to current specs. And by the way, I want you to pull up that 1965 aerial and I want you to look at the trees on that lot and I want you to put your new ordinance on that lot. A lot of people would never be able to build their home back. And I bet you, you would have a handful of people down here screaming and hollering, what do you mean? I lost my home in a storm and I can't build it back because I got to meet your new code. I'm telling you, the code is very, 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 very difficult and could be very harmful to a lot of people. Now, you said call the play, mayor. So I'm looking at the lineup here and we had, we had TEC make a recommendation, which was their, they called their play. And now they want to take that play back. You've got P&amp;Z, they called their play. And if I heard from several of their members in the ordinance tonight, they're not comfortable with that play they called. They're actually saying, take staff version. So what that really kind of tells me is that this thing is kind of confusing. And people really don't know what's the right play to call. I would suggest to you that if I could call the play, and the favorite play that I used to like as a nose guard at the University of Florida was when the offense punted the ball. That's the best play, three and out, punt the ball. Punt is a play. And I think tonight, y'all might want to consider punting the ball. But after you punt, you got to huddle back up. And if I was you, knowing that the work that the TEC and the P&amp;Z did, I think they bought out some concerns in the ordinance that just wasn't totally correct and it could need some cleaning up, as you said, Member Robinson and other members here. And let, let staff go back and clean up some of the language that needs to be cleaned up. But I don't think we need to, you know, really make a change. It's okay to punt. You know, you know, as often the coordinator, coach and the head coach, punting wasn't bad. And let's get this thing, let's make sure we don't hurt development. And so that would be my recommendation. And I'm going to take one second. You know, as a, I've been watching the Mr. Johnson Show and I just want to say something. I know what you guys go through. And the question is, you know, why don't you sue? You know, you're public figures, every one of you. You're a public figure, the city manager, a public figure. And being a public figure, you aren't allowed to sue. You have to, you have to basically sit up here and take that kind of crap and I apologize to you and I want people that doesn't know you or watching the city meeting from somewhere that we have an ethical council, we have an ethical city staff and city attorney, city manager and, and the whole administration who I've known for a long time are the most honest people I've ever dealt with. And I know you all are the most honest elected officials I've dealt with too. So thank you. Besides Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Next card, please.
Last card is Kay St. Ange.
I've been waiting on Ms. Kay. I really was. I'm like, she not going to talk? She's hit over there by the tree.
I brought with me today a big heritage tree.
Say your name for it.
Yes, my name is Kay St. Ange and tonight I represent the Titusville Tree Team. And I wanted you to see that the downtown art gallery provided us with a visual tonight. Thank you very much to them. All right. Yes, today I decided to speak last. July 16, 2019, council directed staff to create a new tree protection ordinance. As many have said tonight, it would certainly be counterproductive to dismiss recommendations of staff and the advisory boards who have been working on this for two years. If we continued, let me back up. 14 acres, 100 acres, 1,400 acres are currently being developed. Two years ago, many of these 1,400 acres had not yet been permitted. An additional 4,800 acres are available for development. If we keep punting this ordinance down the road, the IRL will be a dead zone, the economy will tank because nobody will want to live here with this stinky dead lagoon with dead manatees and fish floating on it. Tourism will tank. Real estate markets will tank. On the other hand, if we require some reasonable tree protection ordinance, the trees will increase the value of these homes 15% and will not create an adverse impact on development. In fact, trees increase marketability as green subdivisions are in high demand. 10 to 15% tree canopy for commercial industrial development is in line with the county's requirements adopted years ago. The county's requirements have not hindered development nor created an adverse impact on business community. The current code for residential development does not adequately provide tree protection to reduce temperatures and to reduce the pollutants in the lagoon. We need more than this 10% vegetation. We need it for the aquifer. We need it for the lagoon. We need it for the economy. We need it for the quality of life in Titusville. We need it so our children can wade into the lagoon without getting staph infections and ending up in the hospital. We need trees. We need the lagoon. I ask you to take action tonight and rather than retain the current 10% vegetation ordinance, I would ask you to adopt councils, I would ask council to adopt staff's July 2021 version that they worked so hard on. I would hope that the Titusville Tree Team will be able to continue to work with the city to safeguard and augment the natural resources in our community for the benefit of residents, aquifers, lagoon and wildlife. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No more cards, right? Meeting adjourned. That wouldn't work. That's not going to work. All right. First of all, I want to thank everybody. Boy, you guys presented yourselves so well, both sides, both whatever, the passion, but respect and professionalism. I was honored to listen. Getting late, but I was honored to listen. With that, council, as Mayor Johnson used to say, what's your pleasure? And you certainly will hear where I'm coming from, but I will allow you guys to go first. So that means, remember, Jordan is up first. He always is that first one on the button.
He's fast.
He is fast. I think he hits it.
I don't think I ever turned it off. I got to agree with the mayor. There was a lot of people who talked tonight and one thing about me, I'm very pliable because I really, you know, it's my desire that everybody leaves happy and you can't do that. It's just, when people are very stovepipe in their beliefs, you just don't win. You got to be flexible or nothing will happen for sure. I'm still a little concerned really about where we're going because I do think that the ordinance that we have right now is just, is too complicated. I just want something simple where people can understand and just go about his business. I think I heard loud and clear, most people had a position, but they are now with the staff's position. But there are some challenges with the staff's position too because some of the old portions of the ordinance, to me, was better than some of the updated portions of it. So it would be my belief that we need to have staff just do a little bit more work on this, tweak it a little more. I heard a few say that repeated what I said about two years, but if you remember, I said I was only kidding. Okay? But for some reason, I was taken seriously. I wasn't taken seriously because I don't believe in kicking the can down the road. I believe in us making decision and going forward. So I believe this council really wants to do the right thing, but I think we've heard some wise counsel from both sides. And they all are concerned about where we're going and we all are concerned about the future. We're concerned about our kids and, you know, when I moved down here in 1979, I could go out into the Indian River and I can throw a chicken bone out and catch all the blue crabs that I want. You can't do that anymore. That, that to me is pretty sad because I went back home to Georgia and bragged to people that I'm living in this place where I can do something like that. And now you just can't do that. But I think when developers say something that we have to remember too, the existing development that we have is contributing to a lot of the problems that we're having on the Indian River. And just like new cars, new cars come with new technology. New developments come with new technology. And we have requirements to ensure that we are preventing and making sure we protect one of the most valuable resources we have here and that's the environment. I'm telling you, I went to a park in Georgia and I saw so many trees. I came back and I told, I think I told the city manager, I love trees. I love to hug trees because they're just beautiful. It's just amazing what trees can do for you. But the reality that we have is we're human beings and we have to have, what's the word I'm looking for?
Habitat.
Is that habitat? Is that the right word? We, yeah. Sounds funny, but we have to have a that where we live, if that makes sense. But we just have to do it smartly. So I'm in favor of us, maybe you all were using the football analogy and I'm not going to do that because I didn't play football or anything like that. You know, I'm a lover, not a fighter. That's what I do. So I just would say that. You may not agree, but I got a wife home that agrees with that for sure. So but I actually like, Mary Sparr, she came up to me with a great compromise and it really was about, you know, the canopy. I didn't understand canopy until, what, two years ago when we started talking about. I didn't know anything about canopy. I understand what we're trying to do, but what I have a challenge with is if you've got canopy area on your property, that you should be able to use it to mitigate the development that you're doing. I think that's a smart thing. I think staff has changed one of the requirements as far as burning on the property. Did we not change that we can burn on the property? Isn't that what you did?
The current code allows burning.
Right.
The proposed ordinance does not.
Right. And I believe that you should allow the burning on the property. It just makes sense. It's very cost effective to burn on the property instead of having the developer take all that stuff to Martinburg or whatever for them to grind it up. I'm right across the street from what Lockheed is doing. And Lockheed is, they actually had a mulcher on the property and they did all the mulch, but then they still had to move it, but that was their prerogative for sure. But I think we should do that. So my suggestion is really take the suggestions from Mary and put those in there because I think it was a great compromise on what we're trying to do and they were reasonable for sure. And any other tidbits that we can get from all the other organizations that look at this thing, that is not going to cause harm or make it more difficult, then I would suggest that we try to put those things in. But come back with something that's more simple and not so many, so many pages. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to interject here briefly and then move on because everybody's got a light, as they should. As we went through the first reading, actually as we went through the tree workshop and we went through the first reading and we show up to the second reading, normally what I expect is to vote and make a decision. And that's what I expected to do tonight. Mr. Fisher, Robin Fisher, I, great football player and great analogy. I'm not opposed to punting, but I don't like to lay a game. And we got a job to do and when you do a job, sometimes you don't make everybody happy. I have been fairly pleased with the many people on the tree team and even P&amp;Z who favored a different version and have favored a different version strongly in emails and conversations. And were willing to and have been willing to move towards the staff's version because it is more of a compromise. It's certainly not the environmental groups, TEC.
TEC.
That truly was, to me, that was too far out of bounds for me. I am a firm believer and I believe that most people in this city, maybe they're not sitting here tonight, but most people in this most people in this city care and think more about growing and developing and unemployment at 3% and new restaurants opening and having some life. So I don't want to come across as I'm just totally one side or the other. I find myself all the time a compromise. I mean, you sometimes have to compromise. And I don't consider compromise a sign of weakness. Matter of fact, it's more difficult to compromise because you're gonna, I was gonna almost say a bad word, you make, you make people angry. And if you can, you know, so with that being said, I came in here thinking, and we had a first reading. We had a tree workshop. And quite honestly, some of the things I heard today about let's delay, let's do this, let's, I didn't hear that in the workshop. Matter of fact, disappointingly, to some degree, I heard a developer, great guy, you know, I can go with the staff's version. Not tonight. I mean, I get, I can't tell you things have changed, but I can tell you that that changed. So clearly what you're seeing from me is, no, it's not easy to make a decision tonight. And there definitely need to be some changes. I agree with, I'm not so sure we need to be dealing with, you know, the property, what do we call your property over there, the industrial property. I'm not sure we need to do that. I'm not sure that's something we need to find. I don't think that had anything to do with what we started to do with this thing. We have expanded, somehow this thing has gotten expanded. And again, we had so many cooks in the kitchen, we didn't know if we were cooking Italian or Mexican or whatever. We're cooking it all. And that's where we kind of got in trouble with the paralysis with analysis. So I'm a little frustrated that we're looking at possibly doing this all over again and have, you know, 47 speakers next time. Well, the point I'm making is, you know, and I heard many people over here say, we're, we're ready to go. Let's do something. And, and I, you know, doing the wrong thing isn't what you want to do. But I think that if you get an imperfect ordinance, you move forward. And quite honestly, you know, I've always said that I'm gonna do, in the end, you know, with all the stuff I take in, do what I think is right. You always have people threaten you with, you know, emails or phone calls or whatever it may be. Hey, I'm your boss. And, well, you don't, you know, we can talk about that. But, and we vote for you. That's all important, but I want to do what I think is right, whether I get someone's vote or not. And the minute I start doing what I think I should do because someone's gonna vote for me, I'm doing the wrong thing. So that, that's where I'm at. And I want to stand firmly by the facts and the stats show that our developers save more trees than they have to save. They do a good job. They realize that if you have trees and a beautiful setting, it's gonna sell more houses. So I think we're closer than we think we are. We had a workshop. We had a first reading. We had a second reading. And we're talking about starting over? I'm not for that. Remember, Nelson?
Mr. Jordan's gonna be absolutely shocked here.
I am?
Yeah.
He's not great.
Um, I might agree with you.
All right.
In part, in part. So I do, would like to see us go back and incorporate the changes Mary talked about and incorporate the changes Bruce talked about. He's probably shocked. He's laughing. And sort of simplify the ordinance so that it's a little clearer because it spots, it's, it's a little muddy there. And then have you bring it back. And I think that will be the absolute final version. You know, our idea all along was we wanted to save some trees. We wanted to save the larger trees because aesthetically, they're gorgeous. They're gorgeous. We could see it. And they're an asset to our community. We didn't want to stop anybody from developing, which is one of the reasons we said, go to staff if you can't, absolutely can't get around the tree, you know, go to staff and talk to them. So we're not trying to stop development in any way, shape, or form. We're just trying to say, those items that are aesthetically pleasing, let's leave them in the community. Let's protect our lagoon as much as we can. Let's, let's help the climate as much as we can. But there's a balance there. So I would like to see us, I don't know how long it would take, take staff, but incorporate those changes and bring it back to us. Now, that being said, these are the things, Robert, that I'm, you're gonna disagree with me on.
That's why he left.
That's why he left. Go ahead. Go ahead. I don't like burning on property because people around are subject to that. And if you've ever been next to a pasture that my father's burning stumps on, it smells, it's horrible. So I just don't think we need to subject our neighbors to that kind of stuff. I would also like to see us look at, at some point, and I'd ask for advisability on this, that we look at the islands and the box stores. And I don't know if that means looking at what does it take, like Mr. Honeycat said, they're, they're shriveled. And I'd also like for us to consider looking at our landscape ordinance for houses. Because right now, what we're doing is we're putting crepe myrrh in all the yards. And I like crepe myrrh, but they really aren't providing canopy. So if we're going to have subdivisions, maybe something, you know, and I don't know what it is, not, I'm not telling you that I'm right or wrong. I'm just saying, can we look at it? Can we put, I don't know, hickory in the front yard, small trees that provide a little bit of shade? Because that's really helpful for the homeowner. So that's my thought. Did you hear that?
No, but, but I did. And I'm gonna be real quick here because I see, I see I'm sinking here pretty quick. But even just what you said right there, and with where maybe Robert stands on, on the burning, it's not ever gonna be simple.
No.
Well, that, what I'm saying is, is you're gonna come back, or we could come back a month from now, and there's still gonna be disagreement on it. And it's still gonna be, well, I don't think we should burn on the property, and I think we should. And I don't think we should deal with, you know, business areas. And I think we're gonna have to get some sort of ordinance together that we can simply approve and move forward and fix it as we go. That being said, I see what you're saying, but.
Can I, can I ask this?
Sure, absolutely.
Peggy, in terms of the impact on commercial and industrial areas, how much of an impact would this new ordinance create?
Currently, there is no preservation requirement for either commercial or industrial.
Okay.
So there will, this will limit their design flexibility if there is preservation requirements. Right now, they can go in and.
Totally strip the land?
Correct. And then replant as needed, where the preservation requirement will have some limitations. Now, as has been brought forward to you tonight, the proposed canopy requirements are less than those that are currently required by the county. The county does have limitations on sizes, which are industrial, commercial, institutional, industrial of three acres or less. The current ordinance talks about commercial at an acre and a half and industrial at three acres. So one of the things that you may want to consider is if you're going to keep industrial and commercial, to look at those size limits. We know that the county has been doing it for some period of time with a three-year limitation.
What's that, three-year?
I'm sorry, three acres, yeah. It's after 9:30, so you know what that means.
I'm sorry.
One of the issues that you could think about is, commercial tends to be closer to a residential area. So, and they tend to be more along the frontage streets that we see. So by exempting all commercial, you would have the same landscaping requirements that you have right now. If you were simply looking at sizes for commercial, then my recommendation would be that you continue to require them to use the same landscaping requirements that they use right now, or you give them the option. Then in some cases, it might actually be easier for them to preserve under the canopy requirements. I'll give you an example.
Okay.
If, right now, you preserve property because it's a wetland on your property, you're not allowed to include that as landscaping under our landscape code. So the current ordinance actually provides some flexibility for commercial, industrial by saying that, and residential for that matter, by saying that because you've preserved wetlands that are forested on site, those can now be used toward your landscaping slash canopy requirements. So there may be that you don't want to completely require the existing code, that you allow at least, at a minimum, the flexibility to choose which of those works better for the developer. So that's, those, those are things that I can think about right now at 10 o'clock at night, that, how that would impact commercial versus an industrial.
That's okay. It's all our bedtimes.
Yes, it, well, it is for me. Currently, industrial has a little bit different regulations than commercial in that they are allowed to move all of their landscaping to the front of their property.
Right.
Now, I don't know that you want that on commercial because along many corridors in the city, commercial abuts residential. So without that landscape buffer, the residential would have more of an impact. Typically, industrial butts up against more industrial in most cases. And it's the sides and the front where that landscape buffer is either a visual buffer for people or a noise buffer, as opposed to the back of the property.
Okay. I don't know if this helps or really makes things confusing, but I'm thinking you've got your landscape area and there's no reason you can't put trees there.
Except that, yes, ma'am, that's true. The current code is not, does not allow that. It says you're gonna have a buffer and you're allowed to put trees, some trees into the, into the buffer. But we've seen, and I think you heard this evening, that there is some significant mitigation required under the current code.
Under the current code, there's mitigation?
Yes, ma'am. So I think that there actually may be some advantages to people to allow more use of buffers for their, than we currently have under the code.
So less potential to change?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Don't be quiet.
Is it getting simpler yet? Member Robinson?
Yes, you heard me at first. One of the things that we have to remember, I think that this is, this document has to have a living element to it. And that living element is someone to, because every piece and shape of property is going to be different. So you have to have someone there to say, okay, this is what we're trying to achieve. And how can we achieve it with the angles and the, of this particular piece of property? So that's why I always mention you have to have someone there to kind of say, okay, this is what you want to do. This is a way that we can get it done, work together. Because that's the living element. Because we can sit here for months, the Yvette, Yvette said that, you know, we came in and, and made the garden decision right off the bat, right off the bat. Yvette, I was involved with that for the last 20 years. So we definitely don't want to go there. So let's, let's, let's put, let's have the administrator give, give whomever that is, and we know who it is now, that, that ability to keep, be that element, that living element in the document. Because if you try to incorporate everyone's idea with the land, it's just like going to a, a dress store and trying to buy the same size dress for every woman at Titusville High School. It doesn't work. And nothing we're gonna sit up here and try to come up with. And, and we got some good things. And everybody has some good ideas. And you got some things that you don't want. But you have to say, if you got water on the land, you got to, you have some stormwater drainage, I mean, put all of that in. So, okay, where can we fix that? How can we get that? You said the developers said they love trees as well. Everybody loved trees, you know. Then we got the Indian River Lagoon. We have that. And we have to try to protect that. So those are all of the things that, okay, when you come, this is a regulation. This is, this is what the ordinance says. Make some changes that had been made tonight. I'm for burning on site because that can be a specific thing. And, you know, we got enough airflow that it's not going, the odor is not gonna stay around too long. But I'm for that. But as far as the, and for other, other things that make sure that we get rid of as much of the ambiguity as we possibly can out of the document, and then make some changes that puts, incorporate some of the things that we've been here, put in for. And then let the, let the rest of it be the living portion of it where the developer and the administrator can look at it and say, okay, well, cost versus value. And then let's put some reasoning into the process. We can't write reasoning into this. So just clean it up, put some changes and some recommendations that has been made today. Make sure that we protect ourselves from any deliberate violation of the state rules and regulation. And let's go forward, you know, that, and next time come back, just, just say, we got a document and we want you to approve it. And all these people don't have to stay up to 10 o'clock at night. Because I gotta go eat. My wife didn't cook for me before. That's, that's my thought on it. And I'm not changing it anymore.
Member Stokoe.
So I'm kind of with you, Mayor. I feel like I came in to this meeting thinking, if I vote for the staff's ordinance, the tree team people are gonna be upset. And now the whole discussion flipped where they're, they're willing to compromise on staff's version. And now the developer side is going to be upset. So I feel like for staff, it's very confusing because I do think you guys did a really good job of trying to come up with a compromise with the direction that we given them. So I guess moving forward, my question, I guess for staff and Peggy, I don't know if you feel comfortable answering this, is what do you feel like you need from us to actually move something forward?
I'm happy to answer that question. I'd like, I have a few really simple questions. Do you, or do you not want canopy preservation?
Yes.
Yes.
I see a four to one vote.
Yeah, because I, I. Well, I think it has to be reasonable, though, too.
I'm not, let me start with the big question and I'll get to the little one.
Because I always get tired of hearing other cities.
Do you or do you not want canopy requirements?
The canopy requirements for industrial.
Let's start with residential. Do you or do you not want residential canopy?
And can I add to that? And I think this was a compromise between both sides. Yes, with incentives, that they don't have to do as much mitigation, especially. I think that would make both sides very happy.
With incentives. Got, okay. Next question is, do you, or do you not want for commercial? Canopy requirements for commercial?
I'm leaning towards no on that one, too. I think that's a good compromise.
Of any size?
No. Let's get one thing at a time.
I want to just focus on residential.
No, okay.
Focus on residential.
Industrial, I'm going to assume is also a no.
I want to get something done.
Okay. Great. Okay. Now, that means that.
Okay, now, that means that there will be no incentives for commercial or industrial. Got it, okay. That also means that we basically will be looking at the landscape ordinance as it stands now for industrial and commercial. Okay?
Yes.
Great. You do like waivers?
Yes.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Let me see if there's, I know that Mr. Broom and Mr. Larisse may also have some issues that we've talked about that.
I wanted to also keep the grandfathering, all, everything grandfathered.
I can do that. I know exactly how to do that. I've already written it down, so, next thing, heritage trees, what do you want to do?
Keep heritage trees.
You want heritage trees?
But if, if it impedes the development where they cannot develop, then you guys make that decision.
So you like the, right now, at least, I understand, I'm not saying that anybody has to agree with this next week, but at least I'll know what to bring you back. Heritage trees should be preserved, and you like going to the staff, to the staff development review committee. Do you or do you not want appeals to come here?
Yes.
I don't want to be involved in it.
No.
No appeals?
No.
Where do you want to go? Where would the appeals go, then? If not?
Staff makes the decision.
Staff makes the decision, well, when they get angry.
As long as you're flexible.
Pardon me?
As long as you're flexible.
Yes, yes, I, your idea of flexibility, mine may be a little different. So if they don't like the staff recommendation, right now, the, goes to the Board of Adjustment Appeals?
Yes.
Got it. Okay?
The only thing we were going to hear was going to be city building type of things, and I think that needs to stay that way.
And, oh, burning?
Yeah.
Burning, yes or no on burning?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a four, one.
No sense not to.
To burn, okay? Anything else, gentlemen?
Let me ask a question, I'm, I have to ask this question.
Oh, that, I think I.
The canopy thing. Give me a significance of canopy versus what we were, how, how are we balancing?
Right now, we have a 10% vegetation.
Vegetation, right.
Right, so that means it can be bushes, it can be trees.
Right.
So the canopy would actually be an area defined largely by the tree. Now, as there's, you've heard tonight, what we don't want to do is to say, we're going to take every tree and draw a circle around that. What we want to do is we want to take an area where
Right.
there is tree in the vicinity of, to some extent, and there has been numbers of 80% coverage, 70%, I mean, that's, but that's difficult for staff. We know that this is going to be a negotiation to say, we think that's canopy, well, we think canopy is here, so we understand that that's not going to be a perfect science.
So let me ask this. So we have a landscape area for industrial and commercial. Can we encourage trees in that area?
Well, you have to, you have to plant trees right now, but I think what I hear is, if we can figure out a way to provide more flexibility for industrial and commercial than the current ordinance requires, because that can have some significant mitigation.
Right.
So I think what I hear from you is, don't necessarily here, require canopy, but do see if there's some flexibility from what is currently there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. We currently have, we, something that, that I think is working, that's currently not in the code, but the administrator has interpreted it, is the survey requirements that allow a sampling. I think that that works very well for large sites that have a great number of trees, so I'd like to continue to use that sampling method.
Sampling is good.
Great, sampling is good. Okay, you've seen some additional waivers in here, so I'm assuming that you like those.
Did we talk mitigation? We talked, we talked mitigation, right?
We, we have talked about the fact that without the tree canopy, that there will have to be mitigation, but I think that you'd like to see if we can make some flexibility there, if I understand what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Mandatory preservation is basically heritage trees, and I'll let you guys work on what size that is later.
Okay.
I mean, you can think about that for a while.
Do we need help?
I think I have, I think I have enough information. I'm sure tomorrow morning, I, it won't look like enough, but I think I have enough right now to at least bring back something to you that.
Well, thank you for following my instruction and having a living document.
Did you see?
Because that's what you just did.
Our best.
That's correct. You just made it a living document.
Did you see Mary's suggestions? I think we were all kind of on board that those.
I have Mary's.
Okay, I think we were.
I have Bruce's.
Okay, good.
I have those. Now, this will not be coming back to you at the next meeting.
Yeah.
This will be coming back to you, if everything goes well, at the second September meeting, which means that your budget will be behind you, so we're not going to give you two long meetings in a row, and I will get to go whitewater rafting, which matters more to me than a lot of things.
I'm sure. She's not joking.
And that, that also means that the LID ordinance will be pushed back a little bit, because that way you won't have these super long meetings together, so we're probably going to see LID in October. It's ready to go, we just need the right times.
I need you to explain to me, of course I do, because I really feel like we just changed the whole world. We came in with a second reading, and I'm not sure what just happened. We didn't vote on it, we didn't say we're not going to vote on it, we just shifted. That being said, with all that input you have there, is that still based on what you had written already?
Yes, sir, it is. And what, all I ask you to do tonight is to table this, it should go under the existing title.
Actually, we, we didn't have that direction yet, so now what we're going to do is possibly table this.
But that would be helpful. If you table this to the second meeting in September, it should go under the existing ordinance. What won't go under the existing ordinance title are a couple of the suggestions that were made about changing the landscaping requirement. That would have to be re, re-advertised as a separate ordinance.
So I, again, I got a little frustration going on here.
Okay.
I'm, you know, and I'll use one more coaching term here. Lou Holtz always said, when, when all is said and done, a lot more is said than done. And I feel like we had a lot said in the last three meetings, and we're still where we were before. We're still giving you ideas.
No, no, I think you've made some really good progress.
Well, let me just ask you this, why weren't we, at this point, at the last meeting? I mean, I, I mean, what I'm getting at is, we had a tree, a, a, a tree workshop, and we came in here with a second reading, ready to vote, and I guess I'm just, I'm just that guy. It's just like, do it. So that being said, I guess where we're at now is moving the table.
This is the first time that I have heard this group agree, that you do want canopy, that you don't want industrial. You've made a lot of progress.
Well, in all fairness, I don't think it's ever been asked like you just asked it across the board, because what we did here was we put our tips on the table for everybody to see.
And I think.
Because you can't do a whole lot of wobbling after you do that.
Right, so we appreciate that. So I think you guys have made significant progress, and the only thing now is just the details. The big picture, I think you've really made much clearer, perhaps, not everybody in the room feels that way, but.
No, I, I think it's clear. It just seems like there's been a lot of meetings on this that we should have worked for clarity earlier.
Maybe we need, maybe we needed to have, hey, you asked those questions.
Well, and I'll tell you how clear it is when it comes back next time, and somebody says, we need to table it again.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, that's where I'm at with that. So I guess what we need to do is get a motion to table it, and I got to think about it.
September 28th is your.
Say that again?
September 28th.
Okay, I'd move to table it until September 28th.
I wanted to do that, but okay, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on table it.
Oh, my God.
Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Still thinking. Yes. Well, it is a good thing, and we're moving forward, but what's to say we're not going to be doing this again the next meeting?
Because I won't come back again.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Good girl, you're a good girl.
Okay, City Manager to kill a few moments. We are back in session.
I just, Marcia just briefed us up on, you know, the farmers market that you approved, and once we get the third-party audit. But she's got 28 vendors already secured, and that's about the size and scope that when the county was running it, that we had, about 28 to 30 vendors. And they've already got over 200 people signed up for it, so.
Wow.
And that's just with a small advertisement that we ran, so.
That's awesome. Do you feel there's any COVID possible issues?
No, it's outside. Separation and not normal. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, we are ready.
With that, we have no first readings or old business. Onto new business. This is the approval and authorization of a FDEP short-form consent order. On April 27, 2021, the city was notified of a possible sewer leak at 3755 Cheney Highway. Upon investigation, it found that Service Electric Incorporated was installing large power poles for FPL and drilled through one of the city's six-inch sanitary sewer force mains. The damage caused the contractor resulted in a sanitary sewer spill of approximately 48,000 gallons that was contained on-site. The crew worked through the night to repair the break and recover the sewage from the break. No surface water bodies or waters of state were affected by the spill. Two days later, the city was notified of a possible sanitary sewer break at 700 Columbia Boulevard. Upon investigation, it was discovered that a 10-inch cast iron forced main had ruptured, causing a spill of approximately 60,000 gallons. That was contained on-site. Again, crews worked through the night to repair the break and clean up the area. No surface water bodies of any state were affected by the spill. This forced main was originally installed in the 1960s and ruptured due to the poor condition and corrosion of the pipe. Pipe has been identified on the wastewater facilities master plan that you approved to send tonight. To resolve these two matters, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection requires the city to enter into a consent order, and this particular consent order is 21-0545. The consent order includes civil penalties of $8,365.40 and $250 in costs for expenses that the department has incurred investigating the matter. In lieu of paying the full penalty, the city has chosen to implement select in-kind projects that will involve installation of two 12-inch insert valves on the east of the break zone along Columbia Boulevard. The new isolation valves will improve operability of the forced main, allowing the city to isolate smaller sections of the forced main for maintenance in the event of an emergency. Mr. Stoffler's got a presentation to go through this with you. I think it's about five slides. So, and what we're asking the council to do is authorize us to enter into an agreement with an acceptable consent order of 21-050 on behalf of the city of Titusville. Upon final negotiations and terms and conditions by the city attorney, authorize the expenditure of $34,500 to fund the in-kind and award the contract to EA Tapping Services LLC of Apopka, Florida, in the amount mentioned for purchase of installation of two 12-inch insert valves, and authorize the city manager to execute Appendix B of the consent order and authorize the contract to EA Tapping Services. And with that, Mr. Stoffler.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a rather short presentation. Just go through that with some pictures and some maps to kind of help you locate where these two incidents occurred. So both of these, one was along State Road 50, the other on 405. So Scott went through this. The first one occurred April 27, and that was a discharge of approximately 48,000 gallons. And then two days later, we had another break of approximately 60,000 gallons. And I will reiterate that both of these breaks, there were no surface waters affected in the area. So the first one, this is the one we're referencing, is State Road 50. This is out by the IHOP, and you can see the green star shape there. That's where the break occurred. And this is the one that was caused by the FPL contractor. And so it was a six-inch PVC forced main, certainly well within its lifespan. We hadn't had any issues with that one. It had been marked by the city contractor as its location, but the FPL contractor went ahead and installed their pole anyways. And so the city's response, we isolated the forced main, we recovered all the sewage, dug up, repaired, disinfected the area, and crews had to work through the night to effect this repair.
And you've seen the mass of poles that FPL is hardening with along 50, and how intense that project is because it is wet in certain areas back there. They've had to lay down stuff to, in order to get that work done.
So here's some pictures that Scott mentioned. The first larger picture to your left there, you see the big metal pole. And this is not a local city street power pole. These are the high, the large high-tension ones. They're approximately three feet in diameter. And so the hole that is dug is actually, it's drilled, so there is quite a bit larger bore that is used to dig the hole. And so that's what they drill down into the soil to create the hole, and then they place the pole. So, and then you see with the red circle on the left of the picture, that's a close-up of the large pole. And then you can see the white PVC forced main with the top broken open. And that other smaller metal piece, that's our VAT con that's removing the sewage from it. So you can see, they're right next to each other. There's no question what happened. The next one, this is a map showing you the one that occurred on 405. We have it listed there as Columbia Boulevard, and this is pretty much right outside of the gun manufacturer down there. I think that's Knights Armament. You can see the forced main to the, I guess that would be the east, that was built in 1980s. And then over to the east, or to the west, we had done some installations in 2018, and so we had approximately 1,200 feet of 1960s original cast iron forced main, and that's where the break occurred. This is also an area that's kind of swampy. The soils are aggressive, and so, but this one was caused, was due to age. That was the reason for the failure. This is one of the, I think, original forced mains that was put in when that was the old McDonnell Douglas plant that was built in the 60s. And one of the things to note, this is another one where the crews isolated the forced main, they recovered all the sewage, and also worked through the night on this one as well, two days later. And again, no water bodies were affected during this incident. And I would like to add that the Water Facilities Master Plan that you approved tonight, the, one of the original versions that had come out, had this very line on it. We received it about two weeks before the break occurred. So I have a very high confidence level of the work that was done by AE Comm. They have identified the forced mains that we need to replace. So some of the costs we'll talk through. There is a civil penalty of about $8,300, and then some administrative fees of $250. One of my goals always is to make sure that we turn any kind of civil penalties into something good. And so rather than pay the fine, we're looking to make some improvements to the wastewater system, and that will be the installation of the two isolation valves, and that's going to be our in-kind project. So the idea is that we get to invest in our system rather than pay the penalty. And City Manager went through some of the benefits. This will help isolate portions of the forced main. That allows us to address breaks faster, reduce the volume of sewage, decrease downtime, and reduce any environmental impacts that may occur. And here, we've brought up another map, and so you can see all the way over to the east, which would be to the right of your screen, you can see the two green diamonds. That's what we'll be putting in the isolation valves. And this is also is strategically done because this is, will be close to where the just-approved South US-1 Sewer Project will be coming in. So this will be just on the other side of it. So that will help us control any changes or any issues that may be caused by the new flows coming through there.
And we did issue the initial surveys permit, as well as the silt screening for the sewer project. We issued that today.
And then, so here we come. There's the, at the end, the recommended actions are to authorize us, the city, to enter into the consent order, allowing me to sign it on behalf of the city upon final negotiations, to authorize City Manager to execute Appendix B of the consent order, to authorize the in-kind project, and award the contract to EA Tapping Services for the work for the insert valves. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, thank you. For the second break, you said the forced main was 60 years old. How old do those normally last? Or how, when should it have been changed potentially?
It's at the end of its lifespan now.
So?
60 to 70 years.
Six, okay.
Depending on conditions.
Okay. So given that, and then the other consulting that we've had done, do we have any ones that, any other ones that we are potentially missing from getting resolved or fixed? Like, what can we do to prevent it from happening?
The analysis that-
I think we are. I just want to verify that.
Okay. The analysis that we went through with the Water Facilities Plan, we looked at all of the forced mains throughout the city.
Okay. So we shouldn't, unless it's something like outside of our control, we should, we are setting ourselves up for not having a break?
Well, they did prioritize the pipes based on being next to water first.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second priority will be the aged pipes. So-
Okay.
And I think that's a sound plan. We want to try to get the sewer lines off for the game, obviously.
So with how much money we are allocating, especially during our budget process, does that look feasible? Or are there some on there that we can't get to from a financial standpoint that are going to hit 60 years that we just?
So the Facilities Plan and the rate that we have proposed covers all of the highest priority repairs.
Okay.
Okay.
Which means then that, so there's, there won't be any that will be hitting 60 years?
Well, in time, there will be more, yes. But over the next five-year period, we have those funded.
Okay. So we should be good for the next five years?
That is certainly our goal.
Okay, that is, that is my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And just to get it on the record, the, what we passed earlier with the infrastructure, this is all part of that issue.
Yes.
Which, to me, gives me even more credence to the fact that we needed to do this. And that's what I had said to the people who were here at that time. You know, it is a lot of money, and infrastructure is expensive. And if you go to the national level and you hear them talking to trillions, then you'll get it. Member Nelson.
So curiosity, are we getting any kind of reimbursement from these people who put the hole in the pipe?
Yes, we have totaled up all the costs that the city expended in the repair of the forced main there, as well as we'll be billing them for the fine itself that we're incurring.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So that's all been totaled up, and risk management is now addressing that with the company.
Great. Thank you.
And before we go to somebody else, can I get a motion to take us to 10:45?
Oh, man. So moved.
Member Jordan takes us. I got a second. We'll give Member Stokoe the second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. We go to 10:45. Any other questions or concerns from the council?
I guess I have a couple, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. First of all, the one by the IHOP, you had staff to market to make sure that they don't drill?
Yes.
Why didn't they do it?
Why did they drill anyways?
Why didn't they drill anyway? Yeah.
So there, what we, what we learned later is that their standard practice is that they will take a one-inch piece of PVC pipe-
Okay.
-and probe to find where the marked sewer line is.
Okay.
And once they find the edge of that, then they'll go ahead and drill.
Really?
So they're assuming that one inch of clearance is sufficient.
Wow.
Or over a three-foot bore blade. So we worked with them after that to help them not do that again.[1336.65][1336.65](laughing)
Now, that's, that's smart for sure. So how do you get called on something like this? When a sewer line breaks, how do you get notified that you got to get all your trucks out there and start pumping?
In this case, it was the contractors, the FPL contractors called us.
They called you?
Yes.
And how long, how long did it take before you all had everybody out there?
Oh, I'm sure with, probably within 10 to 15 minutes. We had somebody on-site to take a look at it. It's pretty obvious what you've gotten into.
Yeah. It smells, I assume, right?
It certainly has an odor, yeah. There aren't any questions about what they did.
The one by Knights Armament, how did you discover that one?
That was another FPL crew that was out in the area, yes.
But they weren't drilling.
They had not begun work.
But they smelled something?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
And you know that intersection, that whole area's been under construction for quite some time, so there's been a lot of movement over there.
What, is that related? Minor question. Kind of much for the road. You got Sisson, and then you got the other stoplight where you come out of the Meadow Bridge, and you go straight across on Grissom? That is Grissom, actually. What, that's been going on, is that part of that too? On the, on the northbound side of Grissom, you can't use that, and you haven't been able to use it for a month. And I don't know, and I thought maybe-
By east of 106.
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, correct. They, actually, I think they got the subsourced down this past week.
Yeah, it definitely looks like they're ready to, it's getting close.
Yeah.
But is that part of that deal too, or no?
No.
No.
No, that's a FDOT project that the current contractor is paying liquidated damages because it was supposed to be done around December.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any software or technology that notifies that there's a break as well? Or is that-
Not in a pipe like that, no.
Okay. So does that even exist if we had funding for it? So it's only by somebody calling or seeing it?
Something out in the woods like that, yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
No more questions? Call the card.
Stan Johnston?
This'll be fine. At 10:35.
Stan Johnston, 860 points at Avenue. I appreciate you asking all the questions about this consent order. And when we look at this, asked the question is, why didn't you ask similar questions on this consent order? Because this consent order says, for example, it says that the sewer was discharged from December the 16th to the 19th. And, you know, we've got pictures, we've got, we've got videos, we've got police officers that will disagree with this. So, so it's completely dishonest, and Mr. Stoffler gave the approval, and so did Mr. Larisse, and he's showed, but it's not, it's not the truth. I think we should really tell the truth here. And that's not what happened in this other consent order. And it's a serious consent order. It doesn't even, didn't even consider the sewage, the air pollution, discharge of sewage into the air for four months. Just absolute nonsense. And what I'm saying is that I actually saw it. Jim Thomas saw it. We have two police officers saw it. Scott Devine, I've got his name and his crew, constructed the final containment berm for limiting sewage going into the river on February the 18th. And the sewage was running in at that time. It was going to the river. We saw it. We got all these witnesses, and yet our consent order completely disagrees with this. It's not true, it's not true what Mr. Stoffler has promoted and what Larisse has promoted. None of it's true. And also, our city attorney. They all promoted dishonesty. So that's what we've got, and so that's what we're going to live with. But by golly, I hope we get, we get to court, or there's an investigative proceeding, or EPA gets in here, because you're all guilty. You know it's not right. You're doing what you know is not right. And it's a shame, it's shameful. Mr., what's his name? Does the State Farm comes up here and says, you know how bad Stan Johnston is. But by golly, he can't point to anything that I'm not telling the truth about. Not one thing. But he can blankly say, oh, you guys are great. Well, you're not. You're not. You're not telling the truth. You need to straighten up. This is a big deal. We got, like I said, photos, videos, everything. None of it's true. It's not true. So anyhow, it's crazy what you got. I mean, even spraying people with sewage for, for months is, is, is complete nonsense. That's why I call these guys psychos. It's got to be a psycho to do that. The Pied Piper of dishonesty and nonsense. That's what we got for City Manager. Maybe I shouldn't have changed my shirt. Thank you.
Next card, please. Okay, we need to get a motion and a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and authorize the FDEP short-form consent order number 21-0545.
I have a motion, and Member Stokoe has a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
And we'll need a second motion that authorizes the expenditure of the funds as well.
First of all, for the record, that motion passes unanimously.
Move for the expenditure of the-
Project, right?
Is that enough, or should I be specific?
I can't hear.
Oh, you can't hear? You needed a motion to approve the spending of the-
Contract with EA Tapping.
Right, yeah.
The contract and the amount.
As stated.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, Vice Principal. Vice Mayor has a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Motion passes unanimously.
We got to get here in six minutes.
Next item is petitions and requests, non-agenda items.
Passed. You're a good, good young man tonight. Thank you, sir. All right, so we go to our reports, I believe. Anybody have anything they need to add right now? Member Stokoe?
Yes, I'll try to be quick. To Member Robinson's point earlier today, talking about our bidding process and going to the lowest bidder and change orders, I would be interested, I don't know if council- is, in seeing what that process looks like, because I have had some concerns about that in the process. One that I see daily, or whenever I come to council meetings, is going to the restrooms that have just been renovated, and one of our toilets doesn't work. So I, I have some concerns with just going with the lowest bidder. What does that entail? What happens if the work is not of quality? What happens if they need to increase their cost? I, I would like to know that process a little bit more.
City manager, I think we've discussed this, and you don't always take the lowest bid.
No, it's the lowest qualified bidder.
Right. Yeah, and because of that, and I, I was involved in bids a long time at Titusville High School for many things, and, yeah, you like to look at the low bid, but you also, you know, if it's not the quality you're looking for, you go to the next thing up. I'm not opposed to, you know, more information or how that works, or, or maybe individually have meetings to, to get that done, but?
Sure.
I have pretty solid confidence in how we're doing it.
And to address Member Robinson's, this was never part of the bid. They, we didn't anticipate finding a dump site where we were digging.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it really, in fact, the contractor couldn't have foreseen finding the amount of concrete, rebarb. It's, it's construction debris is what it is, so.
And that's why I asked the question.
Yes, sir.
You know, when I work with contractors so, so many years, and, you know, they'll come in and low bid, and then, because they, they know that, what the discoveries are going to be.
Yeah, no, this, this was never part of any of the contract, so it would have to be a change order in order to execute that.
Correct.
And they do have to get rid of it in order to do the renovation.
And, and when you are approving those types of change orders, that it's already, you need to know that, that this wasn't part of the job that was originally bid.
Originally bid, that's correct. And that's, and that's why we, you know, describe it as, as what, and honestly, that's our oldest treatment plant, and that's why it's being renovated. And I don't know, when, when they were building Beach Wave, that used to be a car lot, I believe, and they had to do quite a bit of soil remediation in order to accomplish that. And that was unforeseen until they got into it. The, one of the challenges that Woody, I'll call it Woody's project across from the marinas having is the core samples that are coming back right now. The soil samples aren't good, so they're having to figure out how to mitigate that. But, you know, back to the contract, not, not part of the contract, found during the execution of the contract, so we had to make, make a change order for it.
And so, again, my, my take would be that if Member Stokel or anybody else would like to get a little more detail on that, I think that you guys would be fine with that. My personal position is I don't need a presentation. I, I feel like we've discussed that several times, and I feel pretty good about how we're doing it. Now, you know, it's not very much fun when you have a bid, and it's a low bid, and all of a sudden, the stuff that's supposed to be in there isn't working. Certainly, I think we all had some frustrations with how that was going with the restrooms, but I think some of it had to do with supplies that just weren't coming in.
Yeah, the delays on the restroom project was, again, contractor couldn't have foreseen that parts that he had generally ordered, they got two weeks on a turnaround that took four months. I mean, it just, so, and that's not just with that project, it's pretty much with most of our projects right now. Things are, things are a lot slower.
Do we have a process if something, like we agree on the contract on a price, and then the price ends up being more, what that process looks like?
Are you talking about an escalator?
Or, I guess?
Yeah.
I, what, what do we do, I guess, in that situation? Does that come before us, or does?
If, if there's an amendment to the contract, typical, typical, if we have a contract for a stated price amount, that's what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if it has to be amended for whatever reason, just like we did here, then we would come to you and explain why it needed to be amended.
Right, we would hold them to their prices.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the, the delay in the bathroom, they met their pricing, it just, they couldn't get the supplies, the material that they needed to do the job.
But then, like, I guess my issue is, like, one of ours is still not working. Like, you have to, it didn't, the quality to me wasn't, and so I would be interested, and I can do it one-on-one, but I just would be interested in looking at what our matrix is, how do we define a qualified lowest bidder, just to see if there's potential room for improvement.
Yeah, and the contractor that did that work, the crew that they had doing certain things was removed.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go further, because I know city attorney may have a couple of things to say, can we get five more minutes? Motion till, I know, I know, I know, till 10, 10:50? I need a motion, 10:50? All right, I got a motion, whether he knows it or not, from Member Jordan. I got a second from Vice Mayor. All in favor, say yes. Yes? All opposed? Okay, we're 10:50, and we will, we will roll. I don't see any other lights for reports, so I'm simply going to say, this is one of those nights where, you know, we, we, I even had some people compliment us at the break on how much we all do our homework. And, you know, I had a little frustration because my plan was that we were going to come in here, we were going to do, make a decision, up, down, maybe whatever. But what I'm trying to get at is, we work together well, and, and agree, disagree, we've been through that, you've come in on that, we've all come in. You know, it's always done professionally, and, you know, sometimes we get a little flustered that we can't take turns on being that person, and today maybe it was my turn, but it didn't matter. It was just, I enjoy being here with this group, and I appreciate that, and the support we, I get from city attorney and city manager. Pretty special stuff, so I thought tonight was a good day to say that. So, because we had a lot on the table tonight. All right, sir, city manager.
Yes, sir, no action items, just the, the upcoming budget hearings. Now, it is actual skip week for your city council meeting, so you have three weeks in between city council meetings, but I still got a meeting with you every week in, in September, despite having a skip week. Subject to your questions, we'll have a solid tree warrants back to you at the end of the month.
City attorney?
Yes, sir, Mayor. If you recall, we did a resolution for the amnesty program for code enforcement.
Yes.
One thing I would like is your authorization to come back with an amendment to that resolution. Currently, once they've satisfied the requirements of the program, according to the resolution, they have 60 days in which, to make the payment. We've had a couple of issues with people trying to do closings and other things that requires them to have maybe a little more than 60 days. So I'm asking for an authorization to amend that resolution to allow 120 days to make payment, and that will help out some of the citizens.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed? It passes. All right, Lord, anybody want to talk about anything else?[1765.33]